Council. Could I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Narenheim.
Here.
Councilmember Lowenstein.
Here.
Councilmember Kalu Dzadovic. Absent. Councilmember Obaji.
Here.
Councilmember Barrett.
Here.
Mayor Light.
Here.
Okay, if we have any veterans or active-duty military in the audience, please stand to be recognized for your service at this time. And now let us all stand to salute to the flag, and please remain standing for a moment of silent invocation afterwards. I'd like to call up Chloe, who will lead us in the pledge. Chloe, the floor is all yours.
Good evening. My name is Chloe, and I'm a freshman at Redondo Union High School. I'm honored to lead the pledge of allegiance today at this meeting for my dad's swearing-in. Please put your right hand over your heart and join me in the pledge of allegiance. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, well done. Please stay standing for a moment of silent invocation. Okay, please be seated. Chloe, thank you for doing it. Great job. Well done. Who's taking the photo? Come on, Dad.
One more.
One more.
The official photo.
The official. Okay, well done. Fine, thank you. Okay, tonight, we're starting off with a number of presentations and proclamations. We have some outgoing council members and the attorney, and then we will have the swearing-in of the newly-elected officials. So we'll start with the proclamation. So, Councilmember Narenheim, you're first. Do you want to come on down with me? For those who don't know, Renee just set up the other meeting, so she's running around like a chicken with her head cut off. Thanks, Renee. So, Nils, this is bittersweet for me. I think we first started working together, what, 2015, I think? You were in STR was really the first.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, Stave the Riviera. And then we started into our adventures with Center Cow, and you headed up. We were one of the leaders in Rescue Our Waterfront, then ran for the council, and have been on there eight years since. So, Nils has been an activist in the community, and then you leveraged that to get into the city council and continue his advocacy of the quality of life of the residents in this city. And, Nils, you've done a great job at that. It's a long time we've been working side by side. Sometimes we didn't see eye to eye, but we were always going for the same goal. And I will tell you, Nils puts his heart into everything he does. You know, there was long, long hours, both as activists and then later on the city council. So, I can't thank you enough for all you've done. The community owes you a great debt of appreciation. And on behalf of the city and the residents, I'd like to present you with the key to the city.
One more. One, two, three.
Hey, get on your knees.
Would you like to say a few words?
Uh, yeah. You know, it's been a long eight years, and I'll start off with this. The coast is never saved. It always needs saving. And we're a beach-town community. We have a lot of dedicated people that have been working hard for our quality of life, our way of life. Redondo Beach needs protecting, and it'll always need protecting. It'll always need to ensure you have vigilant individuals, whether it's the public, on the council, throughout. The quote I just said is from Peter Douglas. He's the longest-running Coastal Commission Executive Director, also one of the founders. Coastal Commission Advocacy, 1972. Proposition 20 passed in 1972, creating the Coastal Commission. And he was one of the key finders of it and said, "The coast is a valuable location. You can't just pass this and expect it's saved." You know, when I came in the city hall in 2017, there was great upheaval. It was a time of real change. There was a time that the voters wanted to see something different, and that was eight years ago. I've been up here brothers-in-arms. We formed a coalition, a firewall. It was three of us, Councilman Lowenstein and I, and then Mayor Brand. Mayor Brand couldn't have been up here and been effective. He and I had our first conversation about running for council in 2016. And he said, "Nils, I can't be up there as mayor unless I have people up there with me, everybody by my side." Soon thereafter, it was coined the Brands Army, Bill Brand's Army. And I couldn't be more proud that he be not just a representative, a fighter and leader of that, of us and protecting Redondo and moving us forward. But to protect, really, the South Bay. We're so different than Santa Monica and the other parts. I couldn't live in any parts of LA if it wasn't for down here the slice of heaven. Truly, I couldn't. One of the things that somebody asked me, "What did you biggest learn on the council?" Being in council for a couple of years, when I was on a panel. I said, "I wish somebody would have told me to get your therapist license because you are going to be listening to a lot of people's problems and issues." And it's so true because, you know, Bill always said, "You need to listen, you need to listen." But then he always said one step further because it's so cliche to say you need to listen. It's about what you do, that information, the afterwards, the effect afterwards, right? How do you put that into plan and on action afterwards? How do you make things better? And that's really the true meaning of what listening is, right? It's funny because the greatest three-minute non-agenda speech, or the greatest three-minute speech right here at this podium, I already see a couple of laughing happen, was on November 19th, 2018. Rolf Strassenberg came down and gave three minutes of silence. And he just stood there and said nothing. And it was so powerful. There wasn't a single person in the room that couldn't just sit there. People were just laughing. It was solemn. It was something that no one had done before. And then John Grant, Councilmember District 4, said, "I actually could make a motion to extend for one minute." Speaking of the podium, to the staff, you know, there's a little button here, right here, some little black little button right here. That side of the world makes the thing go up and down. A little sign that goes up and down. And it's funny, when you're up here, you're always solving problems, big ones, small ones. You're always looking forward. You know, there's a lot of items that we deal with on the council. And there's a lot of things that we wouldn't, that I'm glad I don't have to deal with anymore. Over the last eight years, I've really changed my thoughts and minds on a lot of different subjects and ideas and moving forward. And it was said to me in the very beginning, "Hey, governance is hard." But I said a few minutes ago, "Governance is easy when you're well-grounded in where you came from, why you're here, where you're going," right? It's not just the direction, it's where your endpoint is over the horizon. And Bill, Bill Brand, our mayor, was so good at that, seeing what's over the horizon, seeing past that. And I learned so much from him. He was that guiding light. When I was working Stave Riviera, as Mayor Light said, it was, he was our guiding light to see, "This is the process, this is what you're going to go through, this is where you want to end up." And one thing he said, one of the last things he said to me was, "Nils, when that Legato project goes up, people are going to blame you for it because you'll be the council member." And it's like, I get the comments, like, "Oh, my gosh, it's so big. It doesn't look like what they proposed," right? And that is the true protection of, when we are up here on the council, that's where, what you have to think about, long-term. To construct a vision to where you're going, you have to think long-term. These decisions are made, they're not short-term. They're long-term decision-making processes. We saved $100 million, refinance of pension debt, because that we're rebuilding, reconstructing, investing in our community. You know, that idea was born through ICA, Manhattan Beach. We modernized our online system, processing more permits and whole sort of permits and record number. Our whole system is online. And I want to take a moment here, stop for a second, and really want everyone to realize how much Redondo Beach has changed in the last eight years, how much Todd and I and Bill and have been here for so many years. Look at this room. Right here where I'm standing, I'm a foot and a half higher than where I was in 2017. The chairs are brand-new. This podium, that I joke with, is new. This 10-foot screen, 12-foot screen, brand-new, right? It's true, I had a conversation a couple of years ago with someone who was describing all the things of the changes we had in 2021, 2022, right in there. And they said, "Nils, it really seems like Redondo Beach is cracking out of its shell and becoming its new city." And that's exactly what has happened. We have a whole new city in front of us. And I can stand here proud and say, last eight years, more transformative change has happened. We've been the busiest council ever. I mean, more agenda items coming through, more projects finished. And that's because of staff. And we can't do anything up here if it wasn't for staff. So, the staff, I know I could be hard. I had a couple of conversations with staff earlier on some of people, on some items. And it's like, yeah, I hold a high bar. I've been in public safety for years. I've worked for the county, I've worked for government. Holding a high bar and accountability, that's because we care as a community, and it makes us all better. And I can't thank staff for rising up. When I first got here, I would say, staff was giving, you know, 75, 80%. We've got a new city manager. We're now giving 110, 120%. And it's just awesome. And from the outside, as a council member, as a resident, it's just, it's an unbelievable change. One of the biggest things I know, proudest moments, is when we had special election, and we got that move forward to a different date. And I know that special election. We kept the outside forces outside of Redondo Beach away. We protected Redondo again. And that led to other changes that we've had for the homeless programs, transformative changes. You know, one thing after the other, it's long-term thinking. Dubiously, I think we have the honor, three of us up here, for having the longest council meeting ever at 4:15 a.m. You heard that right, 4:15 a.m. Please don't ever do that again. What will I miss? You know, what would I be thankful for? I'm going to be thankful for the fact that I have my Wednesday mornings back. And I'll say this to the council. You know, the new council members are coming in. You're going to put a lot of heart and energy and soul into Tuesday nights. Next morning, you're going to wake up, you're going to be tired. It's going to be, it's going to be rough. Keep those mornings to yourself. People are happy, and I'm proud to say, the biggest emails I've got while walking and talking to people is, people are just happy out there. The level of content with what's happening in Redondo Beach is all-time high. And I'm so proud to say that I've been a part of that. We've come a long way. You know, even on the last few weeks. And the campaign, and the campaign trail, you know, the last thing I could say that I could really push forward and got with, we had a press release a few weeks ago about a smoke shop that had enforcement from the police department. Thank you to the police department. Thank you for making that happen. I was walking on 190th, and I walked in, and I was like, "Wow, look at this. This isn't supposed to be here. This is nuts." You know, everyone's been asking me what the next steps for me is and congratulating me. And I feel like, you know, I've been running a marathon while training for a marathon at the same time, taking a step back. I'll tell you, I've been involved in our neighborhood voices. We just opened up our Neighborhood Voices Education Corporation, which is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit. And that means all the donations coming in will be, you know, tax-free. And we're going to go around the state of California, and we're going to educate elected officials, planning commission members and residents on local laws, local controls, how to fight everything. Because at the end of the day, the only thing that's going to stop state governance from taking over our local laws, the only thing, will return our zoning back to a local level. And that's the only solution. So, I'm on the executive board for the nonprofit. You'll be getting more emails for that. It's, I've taken that knowledge base that I've learned here in the last eight years, being here at 4:15 a.m. ICA President of Independence Association, David, thank you, Rich, for showing up here. I had my other members there. It's something that we here at Redondo, we have a special fight for, protecting, preserving Redondo. The last thing I'll say is this. You know, vigilance. I'm a lifeguard, I worked the lifeguard for years. I see over the long-term, see over the horizon. And we are the authors of our own story. We create the book here in Redondo, the voters, the residents, the activists, the commission members. Leave it to the characters to come in and play their part. But we, as a community, need to create that outline for everyone to come in and move us forward. And I've, while I've really never negotiated who I am as a person, and I've held strong, it's not easy. And I'll say that complacency, you know, one saves, always saved, doesn't work. We have to stay vigilant. And in closing, I'll just say that if we're vigilant, and we stay strong, and we stay tough, and we stay what the focus is for Redondo Beach, we won't ever need another lifeguard to come back and save us like we did in 2017. So, thank you very much for the opportunity to be here. I really so appreciate it from the bottom of my heart, to the supporters, the family, the friends, you know, my really good friends, and my people volunteered on my campaign through the years. The two, three campaigns I've had, eight years have been tough. It's been a long fight. And if it wasn't for this community, I wouldn't be able to get through it. So, from the bottom of my heart, thank you. I love you each, love you all.
Okay, thank you. I heard somebody shout out in the middle of this, that, "Let's not be rude. These people have given years of public service, and we're going to give them a few minutes to speak as they go out." So, if you don't want to be here for their discussion, you're welcome to leave, and you can come back when we get back on the topic. So, I appreciate your forbearance. It's not your turn to speak, ma'am. Okay, with that, Councilmember Lowenstein. So, Todd and I go further back. I think it was Heart of the City when I first, not Heart of the City, it was Measure DD.
Right, 2008.
2008. And we were actually on opposite sides of the issue. Bill and I were pushing Measure DD, which gives us all the right to vote on major increases in zoning in the town. And you were on school board at the time, I believe. And the school didn't like that. But I think you've seen...
I was wrong. That elected official will say that, but I was wrong.
And then, the next time really ran into Todd, I mean, bumped into each other through the years, but was when he stood up with an organization called R4, Redondo Residents for Responsible Revitalization. And we were fighting what AES was trying to do with the power plant down there, which was put condos and commercial and all that stuff that we had voted against multiple times, right after they told us if we changed the zoning there, they would sue the bejesus out of us because we'd have rolling blackouts and all that. So, and so Todd became a staunch ally then, or I was an ally with Todd because of the role you were playing, and went from that activist role again into city council and done a lot of good things here for the eight years. I know a lot of what's going on in the harbor is thanks to you. So, with that, you know, I'd like to present you with, on behalf of the city and the residents of the city, the key to the city, which you have well-earned and has helped us. I think this is also a city win. And the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you. Thank you, Jim, appreciate it. As an exception to most elected officials, I'll try to be brief. I had a boss one time that told me less is more. So, if we could, I wanted to take this time not to necessarily point to accomplishments, but I kind of consider, what I wanted to show you now is gifs of the elected officials up here for our city. So, I want to take you through, take you down memory lane for the last eight years. So, next slide, please. 2017 and 2021. For those of you that don't know, that's Bill Brand, the late Mayor Bill Brand in the middle, my colleague in arms, Nils Narenheim and myself. Bill was elected mayor in 2017. He was re-elected in 2021. I remember at the election when Councilmember Obaji was, the results were announced, I saw Bill in his office, and we were jumping up like little kids, like this, excited to have what I considered a new direction in the city. Councilmember Narenheim, District 1, elected in 2017, re-elected in 2021, and yours truly, 2017, 2021. So, immediately, next slide, please. We went to work right away fixing our roads. Of course, that's one, the number-one complaint from people is, "How do your roads..." We go to the next slide, please. Making sure that we have a first-class waterfront. This is the wrong way to have a boat launch, right? Right, Councilmember Narenheim? Next slide, please.
Next slide, Tasha.
Providing new forms of transportation for residents.
Oh, this is good.
Scooters, who remember scooters? Well, we found a way to eliminate them from our city by tying them up to boats. And then finally, ensuring proper enforcement of our laws. Slow down, or we'll call your mom. This actually works. And for all those kids that are out here, who I'm sure are here on their own volition, they wanted to come and spend their Tuesday night on a council meeting, pay attention to slow down, or we'll call your mom. But in seriousness, so we go to the next slide, please. I wanted to highlight for you the things that we've done as a council over the last eight years with the help of our city attorney, Mike Webb, our city treasurer, Eugene Solomon, and Eleanor Monzano, our city clerk as well, too. I want to recognize them as well. And all of you had a huge role in this. Even if you've been here only two years or four years, had a big role in all this. There's no power plant operating for the first time in 100 years. Good stuff, right? A lot of you people said, "What's going on in it?" It's in bankruptcy court right now, to be determined. But I would, can't wait till it's the Bill Brand Oceanside Park. Environmentally, single-use plastics and public smoking are banned in the city with the city attorney, a homeless court, Palat Chalmers Functional Zero Homelessness, and Lilo Murrah Garcia. If you could stand up, ladies. That woman is a saint. I think it's probably the most meaningful thing that we've all done up here. We talk about roads, and we talk about public safety, which is, are all really important parks, but actually affecting people's lives, this is probably the biggest thing. And your town has a heart, and that's really important that we show this to people. And I think other cities are starting to notice this. We've cut our carbon footprint. We've increased pedestrian safety by putting the signs up that say, "We'll call your mom." We protected our harbor, Measure C, slowing over development. A lot of people say you're anti-business. No, I'm a businessperson. I'm not anti-business, but I'm for responsible development. And unfortunately, a lot of cities don't take that seriously. And we do this for the quality of life of all of you that are here because it puts impact on roads, on police, fire, on our schools. This is why it's important to make sure it's responsible development. The Beach Life Festival and the Surf Club, many of you have been to that. Isn't that phenomenal? That would not have been possible were it not for Measure C. There would be a three-story parking garage there instead of a music festival. We're fighting metro expansion into our backyards. All of us came down. There's something fundamentally wrong when you're running a metro line behind 1,100 people's houses without any consideration for their quality of life. Outdoor dining park, that's something that Councilmember Narenheim was very involved in, in District 1. And the general plan, housing element, and RENA, all big things, Regional Housing needs assessment. Next slide, please. Infrastructure city facilities, harbor improvements. How many of you think that the harbor is better than it was a couple of years ago? I think it definitely is. It has a lot of work to go. We've got a business plan and an amenities plan. We've been paving our streets in both North and South Redondo. We're spending millions and millions of dollars doing that. Business quarter improvements, Artesia looks better than it ever has, and we're working on PCH right now. Park funding and improvements, things like Wilderness Park has gotten hundreds of thousands of dollars. You're seeing tremendous amount of effort there. A new transit center for Redondo Beach. Took 19 years to happen, but it's amazing. First skate park in Redondo Beach, and pavers down at the waterfront. We did a harbor dredging for the boaters down here, and we've improved stormwater runoff. We had high bacteria counts until we started doing a lot of these, what are called grounded water infiltration projects. And we've done a lot of tech improvements for staff, for visitors and residents. We put everything in the cloud, and there's Wi-Fi down at the harbor. Next slide, please. I'll try to go faster. We've supported our police and fire, Measure FP. It's the first general obligation bond in the city's history in 133 years, since 1892. First time we borrowed $93.35 million. We're going to new police and fire stations, thanks to all of you that voted for that. We have new police and fire chiefs. We did a fire department assessment and improvements, which has improved our fire and response time tremendously. And I'm grateful for our fire and our police. New fire engines and police vehicles for our city. Long-term labor agreements with public safety, that's huge. It gives us budget certainty. We have full staffing in many of our public safety departments. And morale, I believe, is high in public safety. Next slide, please. Making Redondo Beach run efficiently even during tough times. We hired a great city manager, and he's hired great staff. I'm very proud of that. We financed our pensions. What does that mean to you? $100 million of savings over 30 years. That's huge. That goes to the things that are really important to us. Pensions are important, but so is public safety, boats, parks, et cetera, and the waterfront. We did a tourism improvement district, which actually increases our revenue for transient rights and tax leased a lot of our, or almost all of our city properties. We guided the city through a worldwide pandemic. It hadn't happened since 1918. Think about that. It was a lot of stress on all of us. Nobody loved being indoors, and it was a lot of stress on the city. But we guided the city through it. As I mentioned, long-term labor agreements, not just with public safety, but all of our employees who we love very much and take care of. The city has substantial financial reserves. We have an $8 million reserve, plus we have the PERS Reserve for our pensions, another six, almost $6 million to that. We passed charter amendments, and we did ranked choice voting, right? First time, first city in LA County to ever do ranked choice voting. And I think it went pretty well. And we did political finance reform. We did campaign limits, so nobody can come in and just dump a bunch of money and get somebody elected. It's because you all contribute to folks, and that's what gets people elected, and you walk for them. So, thank you for letting us advocate and fight for Redondo Beach. Again, I want to mention Bill. He should be up here right now, but unfortunately, he can't be. So, we're thinking of you, Bill. Nils, my brother-in-arms, myself. Thank you all for giving us the privilege of fighting and representing the city.
And finally, city attorney, Mike Webb. Mike's been with the city 31 years, first as an employee, then as an elected official. And he doesn't have term limits, so he can... and he doesn't have term limits, so he kept coming back and we kept voting for him. And I'll tell you, we have a storied past, right? We would butt heads. I was on the activist side, I was the name on two lawsuits against the city, and he was on the other side battling me. And I will tell you, when I first got in office, I was a little timid and didn't know how this relationship was going to work out, but I will tell you that as soon as we got down and started working, the change to Measure DD, which is the Article 27 of our city charter, and it had to be changed, Mike convinced me, because of state housing mandates. We worked together to craft an ordinance that, you know, I wasn't entirely happy with, but I thought it was a good compromise. I don't think you were entirely happy, but it was a good compromise. But I've grown to respect, and I always did respect Mike, I didn't always agree with him, but I always respected him. And if you follow his history, there's a ton of stuff he's done, but to me, it kind of went, you know, tackling the gang problem. And then, I don't think a lot of you know, but Mike and Bill were good teammates on battling that power plant. And Mike was behind the scenes doing the legal work to set up, I think it was the wetlands that finally really stopped a new power plant from being built in our city. And then it changed into a fight against a developer, which is still ongoing. I think you're relieved you don't have to finish that one out. And then, of course, homelessness, which you've heard praised multiple times here, but we are a leader, not just in the state, but in our country, for how we treat homelessness, and I attribute that to Mike's leadership. So with that, Mike, I would like to present you the key to the city and a city coin on behalf of the city, on behalf of the council, on behalf of city staff, and on behalf of the people of Redondo. So thank you.
The floor is yours, sir.
I need a ruling from the city attorney-elect or HR. Is Diane present? No, she's in the back. So I can give a longer speech, because I've worked 31 years, and go through the accomplishments. I don't necessarily think you want to hear that, but do I get paid for an extra day if I continue past midnight? Because then I'd be still city attorney. That's a no? Okay. So I'm going to talk not about the things that we've accomplished here in the city, but I'm going to talk about gratitude and who we accomplished it with. And first and foremost, I'm grateful to live and work and be elected to five terms for a city that's full of talented, compassionate, passionate people who will stay till midnight or 4:15 on important issues. Or I know that I won't be back in council meetings, but I can count on Holly Osbourne to be there on the MTA. No, and seriously, that is a great thing. So it is a wonderful community. I grew up in the South Bay, in Manhattan Beach, but I wouldn't want to live anywhere else. I'm grateful to city staff. They do the work that gets everything done. The ideas that the mayor and council have, they actually, they accomplish it, and they don't get much recognition. They get a lot of criticism, but I'm really grateful and thankful. I'm particularly thankful and grateful for the men and women in our police and fire. I spent the first 11 years in the police department, and we have just the finest. And I'm really proud of the time that I got to serve with them and anything I did to help them. And they couldn't do their job if the city manager didn't enable them and direct them. Mike said in the library, and it's true, we could tell lots of stories of how we successfully navigated problems, but it would be a bad idea. And Mike is a wonderful person, a wonderful dad, husband, and a caring city manager, and I am really going to miss working with him. He's controlled by the elected officials, and I appreciate the other elected officials, the school board members that are here. We have a great relationship. There is no doubt that the men and one woman behind me are responsible for a great number of accomplishments the past eight years. Now, I've never before publicly disagreed with any council member. But in full disclosure, as great as the last eight years were, there were some great things done by the elected officials the years before, and the eight years before that, and the seven years before that. And they may have differed on policy, but they all love and cared for this city. But, and I won't comment on which ones were more accomplished, the one thing you can count on, we can all count on, is every council I worked with would look at a council in the past, and you see, said, why did they do that? It's easier to leave, although I miss the people, because you've got a great group of people taking over, a great group of elected officials. You have the current city treasurer, who I've come to respect greatly, as I've had the opportunity to know him better and work with him. Eleanor, who I've worked with the longest. And if I could talk about what I did with Mike, but shouldn't, I could talk about what we've had to deal with, and no one would believe us. If there was a complicated election issue, it showed up in Redondo. With the incoming council, we have Chadwick, who I don't know as well, but I hear nothing but wonderful things, and he was very impressive when we did meet, and I'm expecting outstanding things from him. My friend Brad Waller, who I've worked with for years when he was on the school board and different issues, and he's, I'm happy to say he's my district representative. Councilman Barrett and Councilman Kudjerevic, who in two years, and I'm not exaggerating, have just been rock stars. They just, what they've accomplished in two years, when there's usually a learning curve, is amazing, and what you've done for your district is fabulous. With Councilman Obaji and Mayor Light, it's fair to say that four years ago, proudly endorsing each of them for election was not on my bingo card. Could have got very long odds. I've told this story before, Councilman Obaji, although he got to a rough start, when he was facing a recall, and there was every reason to cave to political pressure, and it was in his district that the Palat Shelter is, he said after speaking with someone who was a resident of Palat Shelter, he said, you know, I can always find something else to do, she can't find another place to live. And that, to me, is political courage, and he represents this district well. I'm happy he'll be doing so for another four years. Mayor Light, you left out some of the contentious negotiating that went on, but I don't know that I've ever seen any elected official that's not full-time spend as much time as you do, working on the issues. And you're caring, you care about, truly care about public safety. I appreciate you for your military service, and I'm happy to see that you're going to be spending another four years in office. Okay, now, I need to get through this part without crying. My staff. So you know lawyers have to do minimum continuing legal education, and some of it, you really learn something you don't know. I went to one two years ago that was titled something like, "How Legal Organizations Can Overcome Gender Bias and Empower a Mass of Strong Women Leaders." I didn't need that lesson. When we interviewed for the Hermosa job, when they had put out a request for proposals for anyone, including the DA, to prosecute their cases, we made the finalists. We went and interviewed with Sharon Papa, the chief police, who came up through LAPD in a time when it was even tougher perhaps for women. And at the end of the meeting, she takes me aside and says, wow, you're not intimidated by strong women, are you? No, I'm not. And what I'm happy to say, and it truly is, the one thing I will miss is seeing you every day. I can finally brag, because otherwise it just seemed like I was politicking. There is no finer prosecution in City Attorney Division anywhere, and I've studied it, and they're just, the city, clap, the city. I'm really lucky to have you. Some individuals have saved, literally saved millions of dollars. Crime is down more than half. We have the homelessness. Every member is, it's a hackneyed phrase, but it is the work family. We've gone through births, we've gone through tragedies, and grown incredibly tight, and I couldn't be prouder of all the things, all the accomplishments that talked about upstairs was literally because of all of you. And then, speaking of family, my family's here, and when I was first up here getting sworn in, Nick, who is two, got fidgety, because it can take a while, and had to be rushed out by my brother-in-law because he had to use the restroom. Thought I embarrassed you with that one. And now, I look at my family, and they've grown, and they're incredible people. They're accomplished in their own right. The future of Redondo Beach is incredibly bright with the caring, accomplished people they are. My dad, who's here, a Redondo resident, and he taught me the value of self-sacrifice, of service of others before self, and I hope I've followed that lesson. And speaking of not being afraid of strong women, there perhaps is one exception. She is my best friend. She's the love of my life, and she cracked a tooth during my first campaign for city office, because all of you know how hard, if you're the spouse of an elected official, it can be tough to deal with. And so thank you for supporting me. And the last thing I will say is I'm going to read a note that I've kept since 2015. And it was Boss's Day, and I always got nice cards, and it was from a part-time employee in our office. And it starts, you know, happy, dear Mike, happy Boss's Day. Some things just can't be expressed in group cards. It went on to give, for two paragraphs of what a wonderful boss I was, with specific examples. I thought there could have been more. But she was only part-time. And at the time, had a lot of people bugging me to make her full-time. And so she said, I also want to be very clear that although many people have tried to guilt you into keeping me here, I have in no way bribed or solicited them to do so. I fully understand and accept that this position is meant to last one year. Keep in mind, this is a decade ago, and I have no expectations whatsoever for it to exceed that period. With that said, I would love to continue working here as long as I can in whatever position, be that civil, mixed, part-time, contract, et cetera. Even though this is a temporary position, I'm thankful for every day I get to work here. I get to go on a court on a daily basis before fair judges and come to an office with great staff, with whom I form close friendships. Not to mention how awesome it is to be working under Melanie again. This is a dream job, and I do not take it for granted. I really appreciate the opportunity you've given me. Signed, Joy Abakin Ford. So I can be at peace, knowing the city is in very good hands, and I couldn't say it any better. This is a dream job, and I'm very grateful to all of you who've helped me to do it for 31 years. Thank you.
Okay, that's a tough act to follow. So we're going to go into a different mode now. We're going to swear in the new city council members, and we're going to go a little out of order because of some family commitments. So we're going to start with Chadwick Castle. Eleanor, I'll give the mic to you.
Okay, I'm Eleanor Manzano, your elected city clerk, and this is one of my favorite jobs. So I'm going to have elected Chadwick Castle, please come up. Okay, so please, we'll just attend.
Mike is going to repeat that for me.
Okay.
Can I just raise your right hand? I state your name.
I, Chadwick Castle.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well.
And that I will well.
And faithfully discharge.
And faithfully discharge.
The duties upon.
The duties upon.
Which I'm about to enter.
I'm about to enter.
Congratulations, District One. I just want to give you your certificate of election. Yeah, really. And then you just sign this when you're done, if you want to say a few words.
Thank you. This is very exciting for me to join the city council. Over the last, I believe, about six or eight months, I've spoken with many of you in the room, both in District Two and also all across Redondo Beach, as well as some members outside of Redondo Beach as well. One thing that came up consistently is that people in Redondo Beach, by and large, are very happy with the work that the city council has done over the many years. And what I want to do is continue that great work that the current council has done and build on that success for all of the residents of Redondo Beach. As many of you know, I have a badge. As many of you know, I have a background in finance and commercial real estate. But over the years, as the father of three daughters, two of which have graduated from Redondo Union, I spent a lot of times, a lot of time with the school, working together to help make the school better, not just for my own kids, but for all of our kids. I was on the board of the Redondo Beach Ed Foundation for about five years. And around the time of that COVID hit, Todd, who I met while I was on the board of the Redondo Beach Ed Foundation, was running for reelection in '21. And I was at home with the girls, and I said, "Hey, Todd, do you need any help on your campaign?" And he's, "Sure, you know, you would like to help me?" And I was like, "Well, all four of us can help you." So, the girls got involved, I got involved, and we helped. Tori knocked on doors with him, Maddie and I, and Chloe helped out with the social media program that he did for that campaign. And that's really what got me involved in Redondo Beach politics. A couple of years later, there was an opening on the Budget and Finance Commission, and Bill Brand nominated me, and I assumed a job on the Budget and Finance Commission about two and a half years ago. Again, using my skills to help make our community better. And that's really what I want to do as a new council member. You know, focusing first on public safety. We, you know, were able to successfully pass Measure FP, so we need to get those built in a timely manner and as efficient as possible. Also, our waterfront, you know, we have the AES plant that we're monitoring through the bankruptcy. And then also, the businesses down there, making that more inviting for the residents of District 2, but all of Redondo Beach. And then lastly, build on the quality of life and help improve the quality of life that all of us love about Redondo Beach. That's what I want to do as council member, and I look forward to working and hearing from all of you about your views and perspectives on everything. So, feel free to reach out and contact me. Thank you.
Okay, if I can have the elected mayor, James Light. Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, James Anthony Light.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well.
And that I will well.
And faithfully discharge.
And faithfully discharge.
The duties upon.
The duties upon.
Which I'm about to enter.
Which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations, Mayor Light.
Thank you. I'll keep this brief, because you're gonna be stuck with me for the next four years. I appreciate the council for working with me as the appointed mayor. I'm now glad to shed that moniker to the elected mayor. And I want to thank all the people who helped me get here. So, you know, the elected officials who supported me, especially the North Redondo folks, and Scott Barrett did a lot and shared that work. Thank you, Scott. I want to thank my wife and daughter for supporting me in this, because, you know, it's a strain-to-go campaign, and my wife in particular helped out an awful lot. I owe her a debt of gratitude beyond what I would otherwise. I appreciate the school board's support, the PTA's support, the boating community, business community. I mean, I just can't stop. There's so many people who helped me get to where I'm at, and I appreciate each and every one of you. Oh, and I don't want to forget Chiara Club and our Police Officers Association. So, I want to thank everybody who supported me. Mike Webb supported me, which shocked me. I was just as shocked as he was that he was gonna support me. In fact, that was one of my deciding factors. When Mike was encouraging me to run, I figured, well, maybe I should really give this some consideration. So, I appreciate that, Mike. But on behalf, just on behalf of me and my wife, to everybody who helped, thank you. Thank you, thank you. I hope I won't let you down in this next four years. I'm committed to this. I will put in the hours, and I'm always there to pick up the phone or send me an email, and I will listen. Thank you.
Okay, our next person to administer the oath will be elected council member Brad Waller for District 1.
I, Brad Waller.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well.
And that I will well.
And faithfully discharge.
And faithfully discharge.
The duties upon.
The duties upon.
Which I'm about to enter.
Which I am about to enter.
Congratulations.
I didn't prepare a speech here, so I'm going to limit this mostly to thanking everybody. As Mayor Light just said, we can't do this without all of our friends, family, and supporters. So, I would, of course, most have to, most thank my wife to allow me to be able to do this. You know, it's gonna be more time away, but, you know, the fact that you're letting me do this is really, is wonderful. My parents have been great supporters throughout this. I've had a huge team of supporters who donated money, knocked on doors, made phone calls, everything that I needed to be able to get to this point. I hope that I make everybody happy. I will not be able to do that. But I will try. So, just know that I will be here, I will be available, and I will work my hardest for what is best for the citizens of District 1 and the citizens of Redondo Beach.
Okay, the next person is the re-elected council member Zain Obaji Jr. for District 4. Do you please raise your right hand? I state your name.
I, Zain Obaji Jr.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well.
And that I will well.
And faithfully discharge.
And faithfully discharge.
The duties upon.
The duties upon.
Which I'm about to enter.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations.
So, believe it or not, this is my first time getting sworn in in person. The first time was in COVID. The second time, I wasn't here because I was in a trial in Reading, and so I only saw you guys on Zoom and barely saw it. But let's just say that being on council has been a mixed blessing for me personally. I fought hard to get into this spot, and it's been tremendous working with, initially in the first two years, council members Lowenstein and Narenheim and Mayor Bill Brand to get amazing things done for my district. I'm proud of the street safety we've implemented, getting people stop signs where they've wanted them against the recommendations of engineering. Not because they're mandated by engineering studies, but because the residents want them, they make them feel safer when their kids walk to school. I'm proud of the radar feedback signs we put in. I'm proud of the amenities we've put in at the parks, at Perry Park, at Andrews Park. I mean, there's not an inch of our district that we haven't improved in some manner, thanks to the great work we started after doing that pension bond refinancing and left over a lot of money for us to reinvest back into the community. I'm proud of these council members also. Council members Barrett and Kalajervich, when they got elected, hit the ground running, willing to work together, even though I hadn't supported Councilmember Kalajervich, willing to meet me at the pallet shelter to discuss expanding the pallet shelters so that we could double our capacity there and ensure we stayed committed to getting functional zero homelessness in Redondo Beach. And we're on the same page on that, even though it bordered both my district and hers, and there was some resident pushback on it. Despite the troubles that being on council, and the target that being on council has made me, I am dedicated to continuing our work. I'm fired up to ensure that Artesia Boulevard gets the vitalization that it desperately needs, and that we roll back the regulations that we just talked about last month to get good investment there and get redevelopment going. I'm fired up about making our streets even more bike-friendly and small-vehicle-friendly, golf cart-friendly, because, you know, we're driving highway vehicles, even electric cars that we have right now. We're driving highway vehicles on these one-mile trips within Redondo Beach, within the South Bay. And our energy independence is gonna rely on us using right-sized vehicles to get to where we need to go and making sure that the streets are safe for all the youth that are getting on their bikes. So, I'm dedicated to that, and I look forward to working with the entire council. And I'll say this as a last final remark. I think this is the first time I recall that none of the council members who are up here or the mayors up here were opposed to any of the others who have gotten elected, be it the city attorney or the new, two new council members. There is more unity in Redondo Beach right now than I've ever seen before. I mean, people are getting elected with a 75th percentile. Our bond got passed with over 69%, 71%.
71%.
Right, 72%. I mean, it's amazing. So, thank you to the District 4 residents, my neighbors, for allowing me to serve you. It brings me great joy to hear, you know, your feedback and your support, and it's been an honor, a great honor of my life to serve as your council member. Thank you.
Okay, my next person is elected city attorney, Joy Ford.
I, Joy Abakin Ford.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well.
And that I will well.
And faithfully discharge.
And faithfully discharge.
Duties upon.
The duties upon.
Which I'm about to enter.
Which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations, city attorney.
First and foremost, I would like to thank the voters, the overwhelming support from the community, and all the lovely people who answered their doors and took the time to speak to me and my volunteers. Thank you to my volunteers, donors, everyone who hosted an event for me, every person who put up a yard sign or a banner, and everyone who helped spread the word. To my social media warriors, even though I did not engage in any battles online, I do appreciate the comments and posts made in support of me. I want to thank my team, everyone who helped with design, social media, volunteer coordination, and my consultant. Thank you for your tireless commitment to making my campaign a success. Thank you all to the elected officials who endorsed me, mentored me, introduced me to so many incredible people, and helped me throughout my campaign. The endorsements from our public safety, from Teamsters, thank you so much for your support. I especially want to thank this city council, Mayor Light, and all the newly electeds for your support. With each event that we went to together, interview, roundtable, and just general commiserating with each other throughout this process, I had had the privilege to develop meaningful relationships with each of you throughout this campaign. And I look forward to working with each and every one of you. Thank you to Eleanor and your team for working tirelessly to ensure that our election process was fair, efficient, and transparent. We are fortunate to have such a dedicated team overseeing our democratic process. I want to thank my work family for your continued dedication and commitment to public service. One of the biggest reasons I ran is because the women in the city attorney's office are all amazing, and this city is blessed to have each and every one of you represent them. Our city prosecutor, Melanie Shavira, who is one of my first mentors and amazing friends. I can't even begin-- I can't even begin to thank you for everything that you've done for me. And of course, my family. I have family here who flew out from the Philippines, drove down from San Francisco, who have contributed many hours to this campaign. They walked, knocked on doors, made phone calls, took care of my children, donated, and even threw me fundraiser. I'm so grateful for all of that. Today especially holds deep meaning for me as it marks the anniversary of my grandmother's death. And so I'm wearing her necklace today to commemorate her. I know my grandparents would have been so happy to be here today. My mother wrote me an email this morning that made me cry. I can't thank my parents enough for their sacrifices in raising me and my children. I always say that everything that is good about me comes from them. To my husband and my children, I am forever grateful for your unwavering love and support. Sam, you lifted me up when I was down. You picked up the slack at home when I couldn't. And you did everything that you could to make sure that I won this campaign. I could not have done any of this without you by my side. Mike Webb. I can't believe you kept that letter. You and Deanne have done everything for me and my family. And I hope that I can make you and this city proud as the next city attorney. Thank you so much.
Okay, back to the business. Could I get a motion to recess in honor of the newly elected officials?
Twenty minutes.
Twenty?
Twenty minutes. You know how it works. We say five, we say seven, fifteen, twenty minutes.
We'll say ten and we'll accept twenty.
All right, seven twenty-five.
Do I have a second?
I have a second.
All four? Okay, we have recess for ten minutes.
Thank you.
Getting back to order, can I get a roll call please?
Okay. Councilmember Waller.
Present.
Councilmember Castle.
Here.
Councilmember Kalu Jervich. Absent. Councilmember Obagi.
Here.
Councilmember Barrett.
Here.
Mayor Light.
Here.
Okay, can I get a motion to approve the order of the agenda or would any of you like to change the order?
I move, we approve the order of the agenda as presented.
Anyone else, anyone who wants to call anything?
No.
Okay, all four.
Aye.
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 Okay, let the record show, Councilmember Kalu Jervich finally came back from a 10-minute break. We've been sitting here for 15, waiting for you.
I wanted to make sure I had enough hot water.
Okay, now we're gonna move into an agency recess. Could I get a motion to adjourn to a regular meeting of the Community Financing Authority?
So moved.
One second.
Okay, motion a second, all four?
Aye.
Okay, I'm calling to order a regular meeting of the Redondo Beach Community Financing Authority. Could I get a roll call please?
Member Waller.
Present.
Member Castle.
Here.
Member Kalu Jervich.
Here.
Member Obagi.
Here.
Member Barrett.
Here.
Chairman Light.
Here. Do we have any blue folder items?
Not for this agency.
Okay, we have four items on the consent calendar. Would anyone like to pull any of the consent calendar items? Okay, nobody? Can I get a motion to approve?
Before you do that, I'd like to pull one. I don't know if you're gonna go down the line. Yes. H5, item 2.
No, this is the community financing.
We're on community finance.
And then you need to ask the public.
I'm still so taken in by the events.
I know you're so new to this.
The speeches were moving. Okay, I'm back.
That's why you need the hot water.
So we have a motion and a second, I believe. Did we get a second on approving the consent calendar item?
I'll second if there is.
Okay, before we vote, any member of the public wish to address any of the consent calendar items under the Public Financing Authority, Community Financing Authority? Okay, no one in the audience? Anyone online?
None.
Okay, all four?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Participation on non-agenda items. This section is intended to provide members of the public the opportunity to comment on any subject under the purview of the Community Financing Authority that does not appear on the agenda for action. This section is limited to 30 minutes. Each speaker will be afforded three minutes to address the Community Financing Authority. Each speaker will be permitted to speak only once. We'll take written requests first. Do we have any? Okay, none? Anyone from the public wish to address the Community Financing Authority? Anyone online?
None.
Okay, thank you. Any referrals to staff? Councilmember Waller.
No.
Councilmember Castle.
No.
Councilmember Kalu Jervich.
No, thank you.
Councilmember Obagi.
No, thank you.
Councilmember Barrett.
No.
And neither do I. So could I get a motion to adjourn back to the regular city council meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion a second, all four?
Aye.
Okay. Going back to the city council, the regular city council meeting, can I get a roll call please?
Councilmember Waller.
Present.
Councilmember Castle.
Here.
Councilmember Kalu Jervich.
Here.
Councilmember Obagi.
Here.
Councilmember Barrett.
Here.
And Mayor Light.
Here. Do we have any blue folder items?
Yes, we have for J1, non-agenda items, we have public communications. For N3, regarding the amendment of the Redondo Beach municipal code camping ordinance, a redline ordinance, a redline ordinance with the bus stop sites. Also for N1, that was N3. So N1 is related to a creation of an economic development working group in City Council Economic Development Subcommittee PowerPoint presentation. And that's it.
Okay, could I get a motion to receive and file?
Move to receive and file, second.
Okay, we have a motion a second, all four?
Aye.
Aye.
You guys like racing to see who gets them?
They're showing they're hitting the ground running.
Yeah, hitting the ground running.
We're gonna make meetings shorter.
Keep them moving going.
Next is consent calendar items. So does anyone wish to pull anything from the consent calendar? Councilmember Waller?
Yes, I would like to pull item. Gotta make sure I get the right number. H3.
Okay, Councilmember Castle.
No.
Councilmember Kalu Jervich.
None, thank you.
Councilmember Obagi.
Uh, no, thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Barrett, this is where you get to pull something from here. Now.
H5, item 2.
H5, just item 2. Okay, can I get a motion to approve everything on the consent calendar except H3 and H5 sub-item 2?
So moved.
Okay?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Would anyone from the audience like to address any of the consent calendar items except H3 and H5 item 2 before we approve them? Okay, anyone online?
Nope.
Any ecomments?
Yeah, we have one for H8 who opposes, and the other ones are H3 and H5, which we'll get to that.
Okay. All four?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, there's a pass. Okay, we'll go to excluded.
Wait a minute.
Oh, I'm sorry, let you read the resolution.
I got a couple of resolutions, just two or three. Okay, for H9, adopted by title only, resolution number CC-2504-019 of the City of Redondo Beach, California, ordering the city engineer to prepare a file, a report pursuant to the landscaping and lining act of 1972, sections 22500 ET sequel of the California Streets and Highways Code describing the maintenance and improvement of streetlights and landscape in the city of Redondo Beach, California for the fiscal year commencing July 1st, 2025 and ending June 30th, 2026. H12, adopted by title only, resolution number CC-2504-020, a resolution City Council, City of Redondo Beach, California, leasing certain properties to Marine Mammal Care Center, Los Angeles. H13, adopted by title only, ordinance number 3292-25, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Redondo Beach, California, amending Title II, Chapter IV, Section 2-4.01 of the Redondo Beach Municipal Code pertaining to fire department rules and regulations for second reading and adoption. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Now we'll go to the excluded consent calendar items, item aye on the agenda. Item H3, that was Councilmember Waller.
Correct. I pulled it. I planned to abstain since I was not present on this body for those meetings.
Okay, so that's it, you're just, okay. Any other discussion from the council on that one? Okay, any member of the public wish to address item H3? Anyone online?
No, but I just have one ecomment.
For or against?
There's none. There's no neutral, yes.
Okay, I'll call the vote then, all four?
Aye.
And one abstention.
I guess we needed a motion to approve.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Motion approved?
Yeah, I'm jumping ahead.
Motion to approve H3.
Motion to approve H3 from Councilmember Obagi.
Second.
Second, all four?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, jumping the gun a little. Okay, and now H5, item 2, Councilmember Barrett.
Thank you, Mayor, I'm gonna abstain.
Okay, any other discussion from the council on that one? Any member of the public wish to address H5, sub-item 2? Anybody online?
Just a ecomment, oppose.
Okay, thank you. Could I get a motion to approve H5, sub-item 2?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion a second, all four?
Aye.
How many abstain?
Abstain.
Okay, four to, zero to abstain. Okay, anything you need to read there?
None. Oh, wait a minute, no, thank you. We're good.
Okay, now we're down to item J, public participation on non-agenda items. This section is intended to provide members of the public with the opportunity to comment on any subject that does not appear on this agenda for action by the city council. This section is limited to 30 minutes. Each speaker will be afforded three minutes to address the mayor and council, and each speaker will be permitted to speak only once. And we'll take written comments first, and I do have some tonight, so. The first is Andy Porkchop, and then the second is Wayne Craig.
Hello, everyone. My name is Andy Porkchop. Congratulate the new members and the mayor and the old members. And today I just came because I missed the last meeting. I missed the public comments, unfortunately, because I was like, decided I gonna refrain from this public speaking because I gonna be positive in the future. And I'm thinking about retiring and moving to a little bit north, to Paso Robos, to meet up with my firefighter, ex-firefighter buddy, Gregory Allen, because he was my favorite here in Redondo Beach since he left and retired. There is absolutely no firefighters calling the police on me because I'm filming. Anyhow, good news from Torrance, the pickleball, the pickleball is coming in. The building, I think eight pickleball courses, so, or courts or whatever, so that's a, that's a good news. I was gonna say something, but I'm getting old, you know, so maybe I'm just gonna retire from this thing. I had a good run with you. I like this place because you don't have a barricade between the people and you, like in Torrance, you don't afraid from your constituents. And you let me come up here, you know, addressing you, speaking like a United States citizen. And I'm here, you know, to save the city, or I was here to save the city, but you know, I'm nobody. I'm just a pork chop. And I had a good time living in Redondo Beach. But as you know, I moved into Clifton, Clifton. People did not believe it, you know, when police stopped me, you know, they asked me five times if I really live on Avenue C. I don't know why, I did not know. It's a big thing, you know, but anyway, I was lucky enjoying the city. I still enjoying the city every day, every day, I looking, you know, because my sister told me I have to do deep breathing, you know, and potion, you know, the good ocean, salty thing, you know, cleans up the sinuses and everything. So I gonna remember you guys as a nice, nice guy, and sorry about negativity, but you know, I just tried to, you know, give out my frustrations, you know, how things are going down. You know, it used to be more better, or maybe I was just younger. But anyway, thank you very much.
Thank you. Wayne Craig, and then Nikki Negretti Mitchell.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Wayne Craig, resident of District 1. Last week was kind of a busy week. I actually attended a really good event, the South Bay Cities Council of Government Meeting, which I saw many of you there as well. Actually, I was there on official capacity with the South Bay Association of Realtors, but was managing to speak to some folks who would be helpful to our city with some of the things we're trying to implement, specifically as people in the water district, we're talking about ideas that we could potentially use with our planning. You know, for example, you do remodel, maybe you should have some, a way of collecting some of the water that would normally be running into the sewage drains, maybe do that as part of remodel process. And also, we have the nice guy who actually has a company that does grant writing. I know, we were talking about that. Now, one other thing I did was interesting on Sunday, I hadn't gone before, what Torrance has this cherry blossom festival over on 190th, right in Columbia Park, really great event. It was really a very nice, nice event, and I walked through, I saw some different booths. One of them was from the metro. Now, they have people there answering questions. Now, they have people there answering questions to any Torrance resident going by about the Metro line, so I walked up, asked a couple of questions, like geez, so where's the route gonna be? Okay, wow, aren't there homes along that? And the comments were, well, it doesn't really matter, they're a small group of people and they're fringe people anyway. They also said that it's a done deal, the environmental impact report is already gonna run it through there, so it's not gonna be deviated from that. So, the company that was there, they have their own reps, it was Roberts Group, the consulting group working for Metro, so this is who Metro is hiring to go out and talk to the public about the Metro Green Line Extension. So, I know we got a lot of people here who are actively helping to fight for residents. Last week, myself, councilmember Obaji, and Kalajervich, I didn't mean to say your name wrong, Kalajervich, we were at the Hermosa Council Meeting trying to get them to help us out with this matter as well. We still got to say, got our words in on it, but unfortunately, they didn't want, they took it off the agenda. So, basically, I'm just saying with, with the kind of rejection we're getting from Hermosa and with these folks who are actually saying that the individuals who live along the Green Line Route are just fringe and they're not important, I think we need to remind them that they are important. There's 1,100 families that are gonna be impacted by over 220 trains a day going through. That's not a fringe group, that's a lot of people who are gonna be hurt unnecessarily for that. So, I ask you to please continue what you're doing, the battle isn't over yet, we need to fight this extension line, it needs to go down Hawthorne Boulevard, that's the route where it needs to go. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Nikki Negretti Mitchell, and then Jeff Gahl.
Good evening, Nikki Negretti Mitchell, District 3, and I want to thank Wayne for bringing that up, because this is the kind of language we've been having to put up with. I got involved in 2018, but this has been going on since 2010. But I want to congratulate Jim of Mayor Light, Councilmember Obaji, Councilmember Castle, and Councilmember Waller. I'm, I'm really bad with formalities, I like to use first names, but congratulations, it's nice to see you up there. I'm gonna miss, I can call them Nils and Todd now, I'm gonna miss them, but anyway, I want to thank the Quality of Life and Public Works for cleaning the graffiti off of my back wall, and thank you, Councilmember Obaji, for getting that rolling to, into the proper direction. Inevitably, every time something like this happens, there's confusion about our wall, it's a Redondo Beach wall, it's within the Redondo Beach city limits, it, the bricks had to go like in the border, within the border, so it's a Redondo Beach wall, it's not a Metro wall, it's not a Torrance wall, it's not a BNSF wall, it's a Redondo Beach Negretti Mitchell wall. So, that's why I emailed everybody, I CC'd everybody on that. So, expediency on getting that message out really helps, you know, when the graffiti comes down immediately, they don't really put it back up right away, but when it's left up for a long time, they think that that's their free license. I just received a check, a text from Chelsea in Lawndale, and the Los Angeles Sheriff's Department were able to cite those people, who, the Tagger's, gangsters. So, is there a way to keep that area safer, because it's open and anybody can go back there? Yeah, it's Torrance behind my house, but there's, in District 4, there's homes there, and it's all within Redondo Beach. And I would really love to show our new council members what it's like in my backyard when the train goes by, it's gonna blow you away. I know you haven't seen it, it's gonna blow you away. Councilmember Kalajervich came and saw it, and it's really, it's something. Anyway, and I just want to thank you all again for the, it's been a unanimous support on this Metro issue, and I really, I just appreciate, you know, after, you know, hearing all of this, you know, like from what Wayne has said, we've been putting up with that for such a long time, and it's just so insulting, and I just want to thank you for taking care of us.
Thank you. Jeff Gahl, and then Michael Lee Chang.
Hi, Mayor Light, City Council, congratulations. Hello, City Manager Witzansky, good evening. I am on the, my name is Jeff Gahl, Redondo Beach Public Safety Commission, but I'm also a PTA dad over at Lincoln Elementary. I know we passed a bond to improve schools and so forth. I know Mike, I know you and City Manager Lowenfeller are talking about the Big Lots Fence, and I wish you all the best with that. Be nice to get some good parking there on that section. But the main reason I'm here is to mention the fence that is shared by the city and also by the Redondo Beach Unified School District that encompasses Lincoln Elementary School. I think councilmember Waller, you mentioned, and I noticed this at Beryl Heights Elementary School, there's a five-foot section by the TK or the kindergarten, the rest of it's eight feet, and then the one that's managed by, in Anderson Park, by the city is not vertical bar, it's easy to climb over. It would be nice to kind of have a uniform, safe, 360, vertical bar around the entire Lincoln Elementary School, and I know there's privacy material that's recommended all around the school, but definitely open to talking to USD, the engineer, the bond oversight committee, and also city council, Public Works about keeping the aesthetics nice while keeping the, the privacy material in the right spots. But I hope that Dr. Alpern and Mike Witzansky, and the city council and the mayor can all work together to keep the conversation going with the parents, to keep the students and the school safe, and use the money effectively to manage that fence and not have a, as you say, the weakest link in a chain, or a weakest link in a fence is the one that's, you know, you can see over it, and, you know, you don't want to have that happen. So, I hope the money's used wisely, and I hope that the Unified School District and the city collaborate well, and we design this right the first time, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Brief question for clarification, if I may, Mayor?
Yes.
Yes. Very quickly, has there been a specific problem there that you're trying to address?
Yes, hi, councilmember Barrett. Yes, there is. The kindergarten area on the southeast side is five feet high, so if you're trying to make everything eight feet, you don't want to have one section of the fence be easy to hop over and cause problems.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome, sir.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Michael? And that's the last card that I have. Good to see you, Michael?
Good to see you. Good evening, Mayor Light, councilmembers, and City Attorney Ford, City Manager. My name is Michael Lee Chang, I'm a college student, I'm here on behalf of South Bay Forward, a grassroots advocacy organization working to advance housing, transit, and active mobility across the South Bay, including in Redondo Beach. Our membership includes nearly 100 Redondo Beach residents across all five districts organizing for a more affordable, connected, and sustainable city. We are proud to endorse councilmember Waller this election, and we look forward to partnering with each of you on shared priorities moving forward. On Sunday, we sent an email outlining our 2025 policy and budget priorities, which we hope you'll consider during your upcoming strategic planning and budget workshops. Our focus centers on three key goals: expanding housing opportunity and renter protections, investing in local transit and active mobility, and building safer, more walkable neighborhoods. We invite everyone here to join us in shaping a more welcoming and resilient Redondo Beach. You can find us on South Bay Forward on Blue Sky and Instagram, or at southbayforward.org. Thank you and congratulations on your recent elections.
Thank you, Michael. Okay, anyone from the audience wish to address the council? Georgia?
Georgia Cantor, District 2. First of all, as everyone said, congratulations, it's great to see new faces, and it's gonna be exciting working with you guys. You will see me often, as some of the other councilmembers have seen, that I will be up here advocating for the development on Artesia as soon as possible, see if we can get that happening. I know things take a while, but I think the more that the residents push on certain items, they happen faster. I'm just concerned, and I'm not sure why the consultants that have been, they're hired, I understand that they've been hired, but I'm not sure why they're not involved yet in the process, or what's holding it up. So, I would hope that that could be expedited. I was thinking, and hopefully they'll be coming to the Cultural Art Commission meetings for feedback and so forth, but I was also thinking that, because I want to be involved, you know, of course, it's selfish reason, but if there was a committee of residents that could also volunteer and help and give feedback and possibly facilitate the situations that, you know, we would like to see happening. So, I think that could be, that could be exciting. And also, I'd just like to say, as far as on Artesia, again, like I always advocate for art galleries and more arts, arts-related situations happening in Redondo Beach. Hermosa Beach has a lot of fun things happening, and they have their museum, they've got galleries, and also I went to an improv situation the other night that was fun, and I think, I just think we need more of that in Redondo, you know, it's, hopefully in Artesia and all over the city, so, thank you.
Thank you.
I've never used that before, I wanted to do that. Leslie Campeggi, Redondo Beach, congratulations to the newly elected and the re-elected officials. We look forward to you serving us well. Particularly, congratulations to my new councilmember, Chad Castle, who I was proud to support during the campaign. The person from Abundant Housing LA who came up here and spoke but then left real quickly, I kind of eject to the fact that, that he said, that he looks forward to a more welcoming and resilient Redondo Beach. Last time I checked, we were an extremely welcoming and resilient city. We have more types of housing available than any other city around us, and we do more than our fair share when it comes to housing. So, when these people from outside of our city come here to advocate and push for you need to do this and you need to do that, I really am counting on all of you, as you have in the past and will in the future, remind everyone that we have more types of diverse housing than any other city around us, and we're already one of the most densely populated coastal communities in the state of California. Again, I congratulate all of you and look forward to this new council doing some great things. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the audience wish to address the council?
Joan Irvine, District 1, and for the first time in a few months, just resident rather than a mayoral candidate. I want to congratulate Jim Light on winning, I want to congratulate, and I'll say Brad because Brad's a friend, and, except for the fact that we are, we've lost him from the board of Keep the Espinade Beautiful, but I really take, you know, and Chad, and your reelection, and of course, Joy. So, I'm really excited, for the first time in many years, I think we have a city council that is going to be able to work together, and that is, one of the reasons I was running is because I hadn't seen that in a long time, so I'm really looking forward to what you all are gonna be doing for our city, and as a resident, of course, I will keep on coming here. So, congratulations. Then I wanted to bring up, and you may have mentioned that they asked for things going on, this Saturday is once again the First Saturday Sweep, and so this is Keep the Espinade Beautiful, we hold a First Saturday Sweep, it's at nine o'clock in the morning, and it is at Avenue I and the Espinade, and we invite people to join us, and in fact, it was very interesting, because last month we had a lot of people show up, because there was three of us who were members or involved with Keep the Espinade Beautiful who ran for office, you know, Brad Waller being one, myself, and then Jeff Ginsburg, so we've gotten a lot more visibility. And so I just ask people to come join us and help keep the Espinade Beautiful, and as I mentioned during my campaign, and I'm gonna be talking to people about really expanding what we're doing in District 1 to the city and calling it, you know, Keeping Redondo Beautiful. Already, probably 10, 15, about 10 years ago, I got that name on Facebook, so it's available, happy to just donate it to the city, but I think there's so many things that we can be doing here in Redondo on a joint basis and across the city, and especially with having, that we're gonna be having the Olympics, we're gonna have the World Cup, we're gonna be having, I guess, a Super Bowl too, I was listening the other night, so we have a real opportunity to be branding Redondo, and to have it branded as Keeping it Beautiful to me would just be wonderful. So, people, please come and join us, if you have groups that you want to join us, please do, we have the picker-uppers, we have the bags, we have all of that, and then also, I'll be able to announce a few things in the next month or two of some new initiatives that we're gonna be working on, on Keep the Espinade Beautiful. So, thank you and congratulations to everybody.
Thank you. Anyone else from the audience wish to address the city council? Anyone online?
Yes, William T.
Okay, anyone else?
This is Dr. Osborne from District 5. Last week, I couldn't attend in person a Hermosa Beach City Council meeting, so I got instructions on how to dial in, and it turns out, you can dial in if a subject is on the agenda, but if it's not on the agenda, you can't dial in, which, which was okay, but I could listen. And now I see why they have that policy, and we ought to take some lessons from Hermosa Beach and not let people that, just, just call in for items not on the agenda. I think I don't have to be more explicit. I think I don't have to be more explicit, you just witnessed it. But I'm sick of wasting my time having to listen to that. So take a lesson from Hermosa. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I have one more for Nancy Skiba.
Good evening, Mayor Jim and City Council members. I want to welcome the winners of this election. Congratulations to all of you. Welcome back, Zane. Welcome back, Mayor. Welcome. And also, I want to say what a wonderful celebratory that event we had this afternoon. It was quite lovely and so nice and so well-deserved, very enjoyable. And also, a fond farewell temporarily, anyway, to Todd and to Nails, two absolutely wonderful, great guys. We love them and hope we will see more of them in the future some way, somehow. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anyone else?
That's it, and no ecomments.
Okay. So now we're moving on. We have no public hearing, so on to item N and one. This is possible discussion and possible action on creation of an Economic Development Working Group and City Council Subcommittee on that. So I think you have the floor, City Manager, oh, I guess Kapovic.
We've got our Waterfront and Economic Development Team here. I think Greg, you're going to kick it off.
Yeah, thank you so much. So Greg Kapovic, Waterfront and Economic Development Director, pleased to present this as two strategic plan items. One is to just kind of illustrate the impacts of the Business Concierge Program, another is to build on that and to actually create an Economic Development Work Group that potentially consists of a couple of representatives from the City Council to provide guidance. I'm going to be handing it over to Dave Schrober, who I can't pick a better person to present this to you. He's been a key member of the Business Concierge Program. It really has been an effort of multiple departments, but Dave has been a key cog in that. So I'm going to turn it over to Dave now.
Perfect. Thank you so much, Greg. Good evening, council. Here today before you to talk about really kind of, kind of two issues and one, because they're very closely related to one another. One of them is the discussion of possible action on the creation of an Economic Development Working Group that would have a City Council Subcommittee attached to. And the other is to also provide you guys with a update and report on the Business Concierge Program, which is an ongoing effort to improve the business experience that businesses and developers and others engaged with the city in economic activities experience when they are interacting with the city. So to give you guys a little bit of a background on the program, in December of 2022, the City Council approved the Business Concierge Program. The purposes of it were to enhance, like I mentioned, that business experience with the city. And since its launch, the Business Concierge Program has improved interdepartmental coordination. We've looked at ways to streamline internal processes, provide direct support to new and existing businesses. And also, as part of the strategic plan, council has directed staff to report on this program's impact. So really, the purpose of this report is to bring you guys up to speed with the improvements that we've made so far, share with you a few success stories, and then also provide you guys with a list of things that we'd still like to do and things that, you know, areas where we see that improvements can continue to be made. This is also really closely connected with the strategic plan item recently that calls for that creation of an Economic Development Working Group. That strategic plan item has tasked us with identifying ways to recruit and retain existing businesses with the city, attract new businesses, and also identifying internal processes, procedures, and even regulations that could be impeding business reinvestment in the city. So you can kind of see there how these two are related. So the improvements that we've made so far, so since 2022, when the Business Concierge Program was created, it was initially created in response to feedback from businesses and the development community, who found that the city's permitting process was overly complex and somewhat fragmented. Now applicants often experience delays that could be due to lack of coordination across departments, or even just simple confusion over what permits were necessary to get done, the work that they needed to get done. It was also sometimes possible for applicants to not really receive clear expectations regarding turnaround times for permits. So to address these concerns, City Council directed staff to improve the permitting experience through better interdepartmental coordination, enhanced customer support, and also, we've explored the introduction of an updated permitting process that provides more centralized information, that has dedicated staff liaisons from the Community Development Department, the Waterfront and Economic Development Departments, and other tangentially related departments. And these assist applicants as they go through the process. So if an applicant approaches the city and they're looking to pull a certain permit for their business, they can have a one-stop shop through the city's website where we can kind of direct them to the relevant departments and identifying the key permits they need to complete the work that they need to get done. We also not only aim to reduce turnaround times for permits wherever possible, but in cases where it wasn't possible to reduce turnaround times, we wanted to make sure we were setting realistic expectations for the applicants upfront, so they knew when to expect to receive approval for their permits. Now that's assuming that there were no revisions or changes that needed to be made to them. Now, over the past two years, the Business Concierge Program has implemented these key initiatives, improved that user experience. And to get a little more in detail, the Integrated Permitting and Software Program is something that we've been working on that would not only provide one system, instead of multiple systems for multiple departments to use to approve permits, it would be one system that multiple departments could use, and they could all add their consolidated comments to it. It would also allow for the applicant to receive real-time status updates on their application. So this would save the applicant from needing to make a phone call or send an email to city staff to get an update on their permit, because they could actually check the status of that through this new system. And that would save the businesses' time and would save city staff time as well, too. Another thing that we've been working on implementing is the Business Concierge webpage, which, as I mentioned, it's kind of a one-stop shop where people can go and kind of get some general information before they go out and get their business license, before they go out and get their, get their lease. They make sure that they understand what types of permits they're going to need. They understand that they've already checked and made sure that the, the city zoning code is compliant with what type of business they're looking to open, so that they don't go and sign a lease for a type of business that, you know, isn't, wouldn't be allowed, allowable use in that area. That would save them a lot of time, a lot of money, a lot of heartache, and a lot of staff's time as well, too, going through this process with each and every business. We've also improved our interdepartmental communication. So staff members now hold regular cross-departmental meetings to track application progress on certain businesses that we've identified as in need of assistance, or businesses that have reached out to us for additional assistance. And the Waterfront and Economic Development Department takes lead on those efforts. We proactively contact the applicants if we sense that there's been a delay or if we haven't heard something from them in a while. If one of the other related departments hasn't gotten an update from their permits in a reasonable amount of time, then sometimes they'll ping us to go and reach out, which we do on regular intervals to, you know, help make sure that they're getting the information that they need and there's nothing that's, that's being missed. Another really simple and really helpful improvement we've made is kiosks in City Hall now in the Planning and Building Safety Departments, so that when people come in, you know, they can actually kind of take a number and, and, you know, get processed in an orderly manner. They're not having to worry about flagging somebody down. One of the simple quality-of-life improvements that we've been able to make. And then another exciting improvement we've been able to make is an online appointment scheduling. So if we identify that there's a business that needs a little bit more information that requires, you know, say, an in-depth conversation with a planner or with somebody in building and safety, that we can pre-arrange that appointment for them to make directly with, with planning or directly with a building and safety or an engineer from the city, and to make that connection so that they're not, you know, kind of having to ask multiple people before they finally talk to the right person. They can just make that appointment directly. I also want to share with you guys a few success stories of the program so far that we have. So since its inception, like I mentioned, the Business Concierge Program, it's supported directly about 26 businesses. Many of them have benefited as well from the overall improvements, but these are some, some stories I can share directly. One of them was El Torito Restaurant, also owners of Calmex Cantina out on the waterfront. They encountered an issue where about a week before they were set to open, they found that one of their utilities was non-functional. And at that point, they'd already hired 70 staff members and trained them to get ready for their opening, which was a week away. And when they reached out to the utility company to get that meter turned back on, they found that it was completely missing, that they had, would have to send out a new worker to, to replace it. They were estimating that was going to take about two months for them to replace that meter. Now, if that were to happen, then that would mean that they would have to lay off those 70 staff members, try and rehire another 70 staff members once the meter was replaced, and then at that point, you know, they would, they would be starting over. So, you know, Business Concierge staff inserted themselves in that case, reached out directly to the utility company, made those connections to kind of, you know, under, help, help them understand the urgency of this project and, you know, the economic benefits this business was bringing to the city, to the waterfront, and to, to all of us, and we were able to get it replaced in time, so they were able to open on time. So that was a, an example of when the Business Concierge Program, those connections and relationships that we'd established through the program, were able to come in handy and get, get a business open on time and, and avoid future further delays. Another example was Pita Cafe, which had an issue while they were going through the construction process. There, there were some safety concerns regarding the ongoing construction there. There's some confusion on, on behalf of the, of the contractor that was doing that construction. They'd more or less been shut down because, you know, there were some unsafe practices that were happening. And so city staff were able to insert themselves to get them to understand what codes and regulations they needed to comply with to continue their, their construction, and so that they could continue to open on a timely manner, which they were successfully able to complete their construction, get open, and get back into compliance. And they are now open and operating on Artesia. So another example of when this program was able to help us to engage with the business owners directly or their contractors, with city staff, understand and identify what the problem, what the delay was, get them back on the right track, and keep things moving. And another example being Sonesta Hotel. They needed a really quick permit turnaround time for an event permit, for an event that they had coming up at their hotel. This is a hotel that's been a longtime member of the waterfront. They bring in a lot of foot traffic to the area. They're a big economic benefit to the city. Typically, a permit of this type would take about two weeks on average, and their event was four days away. And so we worked very closely with our planning department to get them the information they needed to work hard on getting them that permit in time so that they were able to hold their event, which they were successfully able to do. A lot of city, city staff members, especially in, in community development, put in extra hours on a Friday to make this thing happen and to get this thing done, so they could have their event on the weekend. And, you know, we, we didn't always make a lot of friends in getting them to, to get this approved in such a quick turnaround time, but we were able to get it done because we understood the benefits of the city to, to, to help our, our businesses in the waterfront. So those are some good examples of a few successes that we have to share. There's others as well, too, but I just wanted to highlight those. Obviously, moving forward, though some progress has been made here, we're definitely identifying that there's still many more opportunities for improvements to, to be made. And those are including still more additional software system updates to, to streamline our processes. Our new system is still in the process of being rolled out, and there's still been some hiccups with it, but we're identifying solutions and, and eventually, we're going to arrive at a system that is beneficial for every department that's involved, that can deliver those consolidated comments to the applicant, and that can provide quicker turnaround times with less opportunities for human error as they go through the process. So a few other things that we're looking to improve as well, too, is ensuring that the Economic Development Working Group, which is another, part of another strategic item that City Council has directed staff to, to implement, is tied in with this Business Concierge Program in identifying regulations, internal, internal processes, and potential barriers that businesses are facing as they're going through the application process. So one thing that we're asking for, for City Council to do tonight is to help us to create a Subcommittee of the City Council that will engage with our working group, that can better inform our working group of improvements that can be made, that we can then also tie in with our Business Concierge Program, and the two systems can kind of complement each other to improve the business experience as our local businesses and new businesses coming to the city can have a more streamlined, efficient, and faster approval process. We're also asking all of our departments to continue to identify areas and bottlenecks that exist within our internal processes, and even potential municipal or, or local regulations that may be outdated, may be in need an update, or may need future revisions. So we're asking for the Subcommittee to provide some additional insight and help on that as well. Another thing that's being implemented as well is customer service feedback surveys. So as our businesses are going through the process with our Community Development Department, they're going to be getting opportunities to provide a feedback survey where they can highlight issues that they may have encountered throughout the process, and we can use that to better inform moving forward improvements that could be made. We're also, as part of our Economic Development Working Group, reaching out to our local business partners, whether it's the NRBBA, the North Redondo Beach Business Association, the Chamber of Commerce, Riviera Village, our businesses in the waterfront, and all businesses throughout the city, to identify, you know, a, a survey that we can send them where they can explain to us why they picked Redondo Beach, why did they decide to move to the city, what are the strengths that Redondo Beach has to offer, whether it's the good weather, infrastructure, you know, proximity to the beach, potential for growth, but also identify those areas of improvement, things that they think would help attract new businesses and that would help retain the existing businesses and, you know, build up the existing business community. So those are all, those are all things that we're still looking to implement in the future. And one of the reasons why we're reaching out to you tonight as well to ask that you appoint a Subcommittee of the City Council to assist the Economic Development Working Group, to help city staff, and to engage with the working group to identify those processes and, and help seek some help with direction moving forward.
Thank you, Dave. And if I could just add to that a little bit, two, two points to make sure are clear. You, you don't actually have to appoint the two committee members tonight. This is an introductory concept. You have time to marinate on this if you'd like. Typically, when we formalize a Subcommittee, we do that via resolution. So I think what we're looking for tonight is general consensus that you agree it would make sense to form an Economic Development Subcommittee, and then we would come back with the appropriate resolution to codify that change. Just having spoken to many of you over the years and knowing many of your interests in economic development, I imagine there are lots of you that would be willing to raise your hand to participate in this committee. So you may also talk a little bit tonight. Confirm that, that may or may not be the, the case, I suspect it is. Confirm your interest, and if, and there, if there are more of you than three or two, the mayor can be part of this as well. And two council members, we may want to figure out how we want to go about selecting, whether we're drawing straws or, or picking names out of a hat, or something that doesn't lend itself to arm wrestling when we do bring the resolution back. So little comments there. The reason for the Subcommittee and the formalization of it is I, is I, I believe that a lot of the regulatory barriers that we've started to flush out are ultimately going to involve policy changes, you know, ordinance changes, elimination of, in some instances, of our bureaucratic procedures. Those procedures are, at times, in place for a reason, to provide customer feedback, to also provide residential opportunity for input, to provide chances to appeal if you have stakeholders that might be concerned about the particular activity. So not all bureaucratic red tape is bad tape, depending on your point of view. So it's going to be, I think, imperative that the council understands and represents the community's interest in those policy considerations, and then ultimately understands perhaps what the, the cost and benefit of those decisions might be, and then can ultimately articulate that to the full council when we bring those policy decisions back before you. So this, we think, is, is a good first step in, in forming our working group. We'd like to have businesses participate as well, both those who have gone through our process in the past and those who may eventually decide to do so, those who might be interested or prospectively interested in doing business in Redondo Beach. We're open to all forms of feedback. It might be that we do direct survey work with folks, both businesses internal and external to the city currently. They don't necessarily have to be on the Subcommittee or working group permanently, but it might be that we do spot checks with those groups. We just seek their feedback. So lots of ways to do this, but we think this is a very important initiative and one that we would like to have formalized with your participation if you're interested.
Okay, thank you. You know, thanks for the update and thanks for moving forward with the Economic Development Working Group. I, I'm a little confused, because we've formed subcommittees before without having a formal resolution. Why would this one require a formal resolution?
Well, I, I think in this case, it's something we might want to create as a standing committee. I, I think it's something, you know, you do your regular annualized appointments through a Subcommittee process. I think it may be something we want to have as a annualized and recurring group.
So you see no sunset on? So you see no sunset on?
Well, yeah, I think it continues. I mean, obviously we're going to have immediate work to do and I think we're going to have some takeaways from that. But I see this as a committee that, um, would be something that the council would routinely reappoint on an annual basis. We, these committee appointments have to come. You, you can't do them permanently. We have to do that on an annualized basis, but create the structure that would allow for that. Typically we do, I, I believe we do those in July.
We're bringing it back.
When are we bringing the next one back?
Yeah, uh, the next meeting we're bringing back because we have to.
We have the two new council members. We have to replace.
Correct. And then on June or in, in May, we bring it back for mayor pro tem. So at that point too, you can, at that point.
So if I may.
Well, let me. So the working group doesn't require a resolution, but the.
Working group is staff and businesses. I have the ability to formalize that. The subcommittee group would be something that the council would ultimately appoint. And I want to make sure that you're all comfortable with who's a member of that subcommittee. Just out of fairness, I know a lot of you are interested. That's.
Well, yeah, I know. I think we have to be in agreement on who's on this subcommittee. It's whether it has to be a resolution, but that's, that's a knit in the whole thing. Um, you know, this is something we need to focus on for our economic sustainability. Um, you know, we are losing out to other cities on business. We're getting crunched by the state mandates on what, you know, I think housing right now is more attractive in a lot of our, our few remaining business areas. I think there's some good businesses we should proactively fight to retain. And I think especially on Artesia and PCH, we should be targeting specific businesses to bring in rather than waiting for businesses to, to fill the spots, which seems to be lately smoke shops. And, and hopefully the, you know, regulations will be working on, we'll, we'll discourage that in the future, but I do think we need to get out ahead of the curve. I would love for us to get the reputation like El Segundo where we're business friendly and attractive to business. Um, but we got to walk before we can run. So I appreciate this effort. And I fully support it. And as mayor, I would like to be on the subcommittee.
And in part, mayor, that's why I think a resolution that, that explains some of that via of whereas is and speaks to that expresses the council's commitment to that.
I would hope we would, that subcommittee would participate in the working group on a regular basis. Maybe not on a mandatory, but always invited. And if we can make it, then.
That's the idea. I think the more informed the subcommittee members are and then ultimately the city council.
I think the two-way dialogue is important. It is. Hear it straight from the horse's mouth. And also interested in how we pick those businesses that might be part of that.
And I think the subcommittee members will have good thoughts on that.
I know council member Barron was just at a, at a meeting where he talked with several companies that may be beneficial on that. So with that, I, I apologize, council member Kalajervich, because council member Obagi had his say first.
All right. Uh, thank you guys for launching the business concierge program. I know that when it came to Pita Cafe, El Trasco, um, it was instrumental in getting them across the finish line. And I, I thought Luke was part of the business concierge program because he was, he was super helpful and.
Yeah, Luke has helped spot check community development concerns and resident, resident issues. Yeah.
That was great. Um, the problem I see is that the business concierge got involved two years too late, right? So what am I understanding, may not be accurate, was that both of those sites and including now the goodwill site that was expanding, trying to expand the goodwill on Artesia and McKay, started construction, doing unpermitted work, then got red tagged or stop ordered from the city. And then the, the owners discover, oh my God, my contractor is not doing permitted work. I got to fire this contractor, get another contractor. Then they reach out to me. The city is being so difficult. They get the city involved and the city tells them the path they got to go down. And then they start going down that path and they get to opening. I mean, that's why apparently, that's my understanding, why El Trasco took three years, why Pita Cafe took three years and the like. Is that, is that accurate? Is that what you all understand about these projects?
That is, that is unfortunately a fairly frequent occurrence.
Okay. So that's the problem that we need to solve, which is why is it that people are engaging in unpermitted construction on Artesia Boulevard or in Redondo Beach and our economic corridors? Why do they think that they can get away with it here or until they get caught and then we eventually caught and catch them because we're, you know, our building department is really good. So I think that's the systemic problem we need to fix. And I, and I, and I'm puzzled on how to fix it, but I asked AI, Grok AI specifically on how you address this problem. And one good idea, the first good idea gave me was enhance pre-construction oversight. So for example, you have a pre-construction meeting. Anybody wants to start any construction on commercial development in the city, you must have a pre-construction meeting in the city. And then you lay out the, do we have any sort of requirement or any sort of meeting?
It, it depends on what's triggered. Uh, but I think to the point is there needs to be an initial point of contact with the city to help better understand what is required and what is the path forward. If every one of these.
And what's not going to be allowed, where they're going to get caught. You will get a stop order if you do this or this, right?
Correct.
Because that's what all these businesses end up getting at some point, right? A stop order or corrective order.
Stop work order notice is the ultimate punishment. Sometimes a corrective action, usually corrective actions issued if they have attempted to pull permit, they've done something improperly and they're fixing it. Stop work orders when they haven't even attempted to pull a permit, have initiated work that requires a permit and we have identified that.
In the case of those businesses on Artesia Boulevard that I just mentioned, do we know, did they start construction without even seeking permits or they did, they took permits, but then started to build something different?
I, I don't know if Luke remembers the specifics. He might be in the back room or if Mark does. I, I, they predate his time. My, my recollection is they attempted to do work. I don't want to say not, uh, that whatever the reason, they should have pulled permits, they should have submitted plans, they, they didn't. And they, complaints were raised. We identified those complaints and shut the work down.
Okay. So.
I can't speak to their intention if it was known or, uh, happenstance. But sequence was the same regardless.
Some other recommendations are increased visibility of permitting requirements, strengthen monitoring enforcement, streamlining the permitting process, which I understand y'all are doing anyways, and imposing stiff penalties. With that said, I mean, this business, uh, Pita Cafe is already looking to sell its business because I think they just want to recapture their, their, their capital. So I'm very interested to see that we, I, I, I appreciate what you all are doing with the business concierge program, but I, I think that we need to address the problem that occurs before it even reaches the business.
Yeah. And I couldn't, and I could agree more. And I think Mark, if, and he may want to speak to some of these points, but that's what Mark's working very hard to do, which is, you know, the, the, these 26 businesses have the awareness to come to us and seek this help. There are hundreds, literally hundreds and hundreds of permits that we're processing at any given time in the city and not everybody is going to receive business concierge treatment, but we want to ensure that everybody is receiving business concierge service. And the community development department, particularly Mark, it's been his charge to identify systematic breakdowns and to try to consolidate those, enhance those, improve upon those. I believe we were, we launched, I work Monday, yesterday, our new online permitting portal. Uh, I know he's quite excited about that. We are working through any kind of launch kinks that you typically would experience for, with new software. But it is a charge. There was a strategic planning session held with the community development department a couple of weeks ago to, to focus on customer service. A lot of initiatives are, are moving forward. The goal here is if we do this well, we don't even need a business concierge program because the efficiency and the effectiveness that's occurring in community development makes it superfluous. And that's the hope at some point. I, that's an optimistic goal perhaps. But I know Mark's working quite hard on that. I don't, is there anything, Mark, you want to speak to? Maybe come on up to the podium and I mean, I, you could probably rattle off about 15 things you're trying to fix right now, but.
So a couple of months ago, I presented to the council on the organizational assessment and the action plan that we're, is in the works. So a lot of the things that were referenced in the presentation and stuff that my department's working on internally. We did launch the permitting system today, which I think is going to make the process much more efficient internally and also make it easier to access for applicants. There's a number of other process improvements that we're working on. But I really see that a lot of the focus of this committee is squarely on the efforts that my department's doing in terms of process and permitting. But then also there's the regular regulatory component of it as well. Because some of our regulations could be a little bit onerous for new businesses. For example, the requirement for conditional use permits. You have to go to a hearing with the planning commission. It can take several months. There's some uncertainty. And we require this for some fairly minor businesses. I think we need to take a closer look at that. Take a closer look at some of the parking standards and other regulatory barriers in addition to the procedural barriers and, um, hangups we're working on as a department right now. So it's really two-pronged in terms of addressing this. And we are diligently working on it and it's been a real focus in my time here over this past year.
I think some of it's cultural too, though. You know, like a parking lot for the, uh, uh, businesses along, um, Harando that came back because of a minor knit on a drawing. It took weeks of going back and forth just to get a little change on the drawing that was, should have been obvious to anybody who knew the project.
Yeah, it is. And there's been, um, the cultural, and we've spoken about this. And that's probably the most important aspect. How are we working with customers? What's our attitude? What's our demeanor? Are we solution oriented? So there's been a lot of focus on that. And I think we've seen improvement in recent months and I expect that to continue. And then also come budget time, we're going to be making some recommendations that may look to help expedite the building plan check process, which can be a real bottleneck in our process. And we're looking for ways to get that to a two-week turnaround, but I'll be presenting that to the council at a future meeting. So it's multiple different efforts and I covered it to some extent a few months ago and I was going to report back at the six-month mark and can assure the council that progress is being made.
So, uh, would you, would you think that, do you think that having some sort of mandatory pre-construction meeting with the city, if you're developing, uh, you know, a new building or new structures or renovation on the Artesia or PCH corridors, that that should be a requirement in the code? Do you think that would benefit the process at all?
I think that's a good idea. Um, in fact, and the city manager mentioned this, we had a department strategic planning session about a month ago. We're going to have a document produced. And one of the ideas that came out of that meeting is that we really do need a pre-construction meeting with the applicants. It's really kind of on an ad hoc basis where they come in if they happen to have questions. But we really need something that's more structured that lets somebody know going into the project what it is they're going to need and, and how to be prepared. In addition to that, we're also working on videos and handouts that are going to help prep. But I think that meeting is key because our ability to have staff get eyes on the project and give feedback is really important upfront rather than when there's several months into it and they're blindsided by some of the things that come up.
So I want to caution the, the council, this isn't the solutioning part. This is the receive and file here where they're at and setting up this committee to come up with these solutions. Well, I appreciate the solutions now. That's not what's on the agenda.
But if I don't get on the committee, I'm not going to be able to ask these questions.
When the committee comes.
You can always call me anytime and I'm available to tell you what's going on.
Thank you. That's it.
Council member Kalajervich.
Thank you, mayor. Thank you for this report and, um, you know, the Economic Develop Working Group was something that I wanted to bring, was something that I brought with a strategic plan last year. And we did have a meeting and we have, uh, gone over some of these items just procedurally as far as what we set up here, um, with regulations on council. I think there's clear examples of, of ways we can do better, um, make better policies that are more business friendly. One of the things that stuck out to me, um, just in the last year, we had a, um, a Pilates studio that was good, that was trying to open in the legato and they had to go before the planning commission to get a CUP for that. That seems a bit excessive. Meanwhile, I mean, we've discussed this before, smoke shops by right are, you know, like we, we need to reevaluate how we're doing that, um, to attract the businesses that we are looking for. And mayor, you mentioned, we're not just saying blanket, let's focus on business. Let's be targeted about what types of businesses that we are looking for and how we remove barriers or create some kind of incentives for them to come here. So, um, those are just comments I would like to make. I'm full, fully supportive of creating this subcommittee. I'm, I'm assuming similarly that we have the education subcommittee, a, a constant standing subcommittee. Members can be rotated, um, but it is a focus of, it should be a, a constant focus for the city. So I look forward to this discussion again. Um, I would be happy to be on the committee. And, uh, those are my thoughts for now. Thank you.
So let me do a quick poll before then Brad, you have the floor. Um, anybody not want to be on the committee? I assume.
Does anyone not want to talk about business up here?
Okay. So we're going to have to figure out amongst us who, who goes arm wrestling.
Well, remember it's not, it's, it's, we're going to be talking about it every year. So it can be a rotation.
No, just like the rest of our. Okay. Okay, council member Waller.
Thank you. Um, I'm glad to see this here. I think this is a vitally important item and maybe the most important item for Redondo Beach because economic development is how we are going to pay for everything that we want to have. All the nice things that residents want to see. I would like, you know, you had one bullet point talking about a tighter integration, uh, between departments, interdepartmental things. I've definitely seen that kind of thing with, you know, it's not just, it's, it's planning, it's inspection, it's everything. I was talking to somebody in one of the other cities and their project, you know, they said, oh, I need to go see this person now. It's like, no, you don't. I'm going to do that for you. So that concierge is the person that was the interface between planning and inspection and all, and engineering and all the departments so that the person doing the project didn't have to figure all this stuff out. And so I would really love to see us move to that, that level of service. There's also an article very recently about creating a business improvement district. They called it, it was LA City, the Jedi. I guess looking for my note to see where, what it stood for, what the Jedi stood for, but you know, things like that I think can come out of this, this subcommittee, which all of us want to be on. And so we'll have to have two of us plus an AI plus the mayor on it. So we can. So, um, I'll leave it at that.
Okay. Do we want to take a shot at who should be the first two right now? You need it for the next resolution or we don't?
You can think about it. We can table it and you can have that conversation when we bring it back as a standalone item or I'll, we'll just add it to the list of subcommittee appointments that we'll bring back to you on the 15th and then you can, you can.
Let's do it there.
Trade over it then.
So I've sent you all an email about those. So as you're to add one more and tell me which ones, you know, you'd like to be on. I'm sure we're all going to want to be on that. So we'll have to figure out a vetting process there. Okay. So you need a motion, we receive and file?
Mayor, one more comment, please.
No. Yeah. Okay.
So, I think it's important for whoever gets on here. And I think what comes to mind is maybe council member Barron, because we brownacted on the subject. And he's been going to Cal League of City or Cal Cities, uh, and has met some, you know, commercial developers there and certainly is on with them, is that whoever is on this committee also be engaged and proactive in going out to the, uh, meetings, conferences, ICSC, that's the international, something about shop, of shopping centers, whatever it is, but be proactive, uh, and have initiative in meeting with the business community to try to get them to come to Redondo Beach. With that said, I think in the last four years, uh, we've, we've been trying to get our regulations in shape to receive investment, uh, in the city. So I don't think we're quite there yet, but certainly, you know, I, I'm not meeting many through the cog. Uh, I think where council member Barron sits and what committees he can be on with Cal Cities is probably one good spot. And anybody else who's engaged in that community, uh, would be a good person to throw on.
But maybe a north and a south rep.
Sure.
Okay. We don't have to decide that tonight. So, uh, can I get a motion to receive and file?
First, receive and file.
A second?
A second.
Okay. Any of the, anyone from the public wish to comment on this item before we vote?
Hello, everyone. My name is Philip Norman Garner. Usually I call in on the phone, distorted voices because I'm a scumbag. Anyway, uh, I like this idea, very good idea. Because, uh, you know, attracting businesses and streamlining business applications and processes is very important because everybody is grabbing businesses. Like, uh, I live in the city of Torrance, close to Redondo Beach on the north end. city of Torrance, close to Redondo Beach on the north end. And the city of Torrance making big steps. The mayor goes out every day promoting Torrance. City Cable have their idiotic, you know, commercials and come to Torrance and this and that, celebrating themselves. And the hotels, you know, they're telling people, inviting people for the Olympics, because that's going to happen. Anyway, so I think this is a very good idea. I'm a positive person, not like the stupid pork chop. And you need this, go ahead with it, because if you go out to the waterfront, you go out to the pier, every, not every business, lots of businesses empty. People has to open businesses. It has to be so friendly. People put their money in it, because, you know, it's a big risk to open a business nowadays. And more businesses to the pier, more businesses on PCH or Artesia, everywhere, because sales tax money, you know, that's, that's what you need. Anyway, thank you for letting me speak. My name again, Philip Norman Garner. And next time, I'm going to tell you my address, too, because everybody can just come in here and not talking about city matters and, you know, tell people their private information. Thank you very much. Thank you for letting me speak.
Anyone else? Anyone online?
Yes, I have Rob Resnick.
Who?
Rob Resnick. Robert.
Who's Rob?
Robert.
Robert.
Go ahead.
Can you hear me, council members?
Yes, we can, Robert.
Oh, okay. Well, Eleanor was right. I used to be Bob Resnick. Now Robert Resnick. I am, and first, let me thank you, Mayor, and council members and, and staff for bringing forward this extremely important proposal. I am here to speak as the president of the Redondo Pier Association and the longtime master leaseholder of the Redondo Landing since 1987. On behalf of the stakeholders in the pier and the waterfront, I am here to offer my wholehearted support for this important program and proposal to, to put together the mechanisms of government and good policymaking to make it even better than it already is. It is not just a good idea. It is a critical and an indispensable idea, as the mayor so eloquently expressed, to allow us to remain competitive with our neighbors and other cities who are all fighting desperately for the same businesses to come into their cities and good businesses. And, and to, and as Councilmember Obaji said, there is a problem with people not following the rules. And it is not just that they are bad people, but it's also because it is very difficult in today's world to really fully understand the full array of rules that have to be followed. And I think it's kind of common sense that the tougher the rules are to understand, the more likely they are to be broken, and none of us want to see that happening. In addition to attraction and retention of key merchants and businesses into the city, the working group has been proposed, is also, in my opinion, indispensable, because you need to have eyes, as policymakers, you need to have eyes and ears on the ground. And, and the program will not only help guide people through a difficult process and make Redondo be, and help rebrand Redondo Beach as a very business-friendly community, but they will also be, the concierges will also be your eyes and ears on the ground. And they will, they will have a better understanding, probably than anybody, of what it is that is challenging for businesses, existing businesses and new businesses. And that will contribute to better policymaking at the council, commission, and senior staff level. Just a word, Dave from the Harbor Department spoke about a challenge that one of my tenants, El Torito, had.
I'm sorry, Mr. Resnick, your time's up.
Is there any desire to give me an extra minute? No.
We stopped uniformly extending time just to everybody, so we honor the free speech rights.
All righty. Well, thank you for, for listening.
Anyone else?
I've done, and no e-commerce. That's it.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor, all four. Anyone opposed? Okay, motion passes. Point of order, Mr. Kapovich. Are we, are we having a closed session after this? Is there a reason?
We are, yes.
Okay, okay. Thank you. Okay, we're going to item N2, discussion and possible action on the status of operations at the Redondo Beach Performing Arts Center and options for maximizing facility revenue.
I'd like to welcome Elizabeth House, Community Services Director, and Jack Meyer, our Cultural Arts Manager, who's here tonight to present this very important item. Thank you.
I'm Clark. I have a presentation.
Thank you.
All right, thank you so much. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Elizabeth House, Community Services Director. With me, I have Jack Meyer, our new Cultural Arts Manager. And though he is new to the role, he is not new to the city. He has been with the city for over 30 years. A majority of that time, if not all of that time, has been at the Performing Arts Center. So there is nobody better to walk the council through this item. It is a strategic plan item that we're bringing back to you.
If I could just say, we call it Jack's house.
It is Jack's house.
The house that Jack built.
And so tonight, we are providing you a report on the status of Redondo Beach Performing Arts Center. And we're trying to also present to you options for increasing utilization of that space and to maximize facility revenue. So with that, before I hand it over to Mr. Meyer, I'm going to go ahead and give the council a brief background on the history of the Performing Arts Center. It was originally the Aviation High School Auditorium, which was opened in January 1971. The school closed just about a decade later in 1982, and in 1984, the city, the city of Redondo Beach acquired the auditorium as part of the new aviation park. The auditorium was later renamed the Redondo Beach Performing Arts Center. Between 1984 and 2001, there were several upgrades to the facility, but the biggest renovation to the RV PAC began in 2001. The grand reopening took place just two years later in 2003. And as you can see from these photos, everything that was improved at the site, the renovation and the investment into that renovation was significant. It was $11.5 million in renovations. A majority of it was paid for through state and county grant funds, and a million dollars of that was city funds. And there was no municipal bonds or tax increases required for that upgrade. So that, that is where we are today with the facility. And here is where I hand it over to Mr. Meyer to walk you through the current fiscal status.
Who, in case you didn't notice, was in that last one.
Everybody thinks it's him, but I was also corrected. That's not him. Yeah.
No. Nope, there is an employee who looks a lot like me.
So go ahead, take it away.
Well, we'll start off by talking about basically four things. How much money we made, how much money we spent, how much money we think we should spend, and finally, how can we get more money? So we're going to start with the miniature financial summary that we have here. And you'll see that the total of the revenue topped $1,122,000 in the last complete fiscal year that we have records for, which is '23 and '24. That has not occurred since 2018, 19, due mostly to COVID ramifications, companies that didn't survive the, the COVID lockdown, and also companies that were shy about restarting. Well, we're back. These numbers are among the highest we have posted as revenue thus far. So moving on, we got money.
You mean by production expenses? Sorry?
Production expenses are a, we divide our money up as it comes in, some of it to use for third-party rentals, other services, so we don't have to budget a specific item that is unpredictable, such as, say, usher services. How many shows you're going to book? You don't know. You don't know how many the audience is going to be. So we charge them. They give us the money. We make the arrangements and take care of it.
Got it. Thank you.
So that, that all comes in as revenue. Some of it, of course, becomes expenses, and that's shown at the lower level where you see production expenses.
Got it. Thank you.
That's the other half. Then we had a 2021 capital improvement project allocation that allowed us to actually get some deferred maintenance done. Some of the maintenance was deferred because of lack of revenue for two years and for various slow recovering clientele. So, but we were allocated, we were able to replace the old electronic marquee, which was euphemistically referred to as a colorful signal sign. Now it is high definition. It looks good. It enhances rather than attracts. And it also helps very much with offering value added to our clients for advertising their shows. It is restricted strictly to events on the property. This is not used for outside advertising, or it's not a billboard. It is strictly for the venue. Then we were able to replace our projector, which was very old, standard def, got it up to high definition with twice the brightness of our previous one and an upgraded screen. So now our productions and our corporate meetings have nice AV presentation. Then the big one was the loudspeakers, which were over 20, almost 24 years old, and they sounded like it. And people were noticing it, and we were losing clientele who were looking at the cost of having to rent an entire PA system just to get through their show and deciding maybe they would go somewhere better equipped. Well, now no one in our, in the South Bay is better equipped than we are. That is the best sounding PA bar none. It's one of the two top companies in the world, and they sound fantastic. And we get a lot of, a lot more business inquiries because of it. Moving on, things that we think need to be done. These are deferred maintenance items that were deferred for the same reason as, as others, is a lack of activity, a lack of revenue, and various other city higher priorities. So at this time, we're looking at, this item was a part of that 2021 capital improvement project. However, following COVID, between shipping costs and labor cost increases and the Great Resignation, basically, everything went up, way more than what we had originally budgeted. However, there is sufficient money remaining in there to do the first half of it. So we're looking at an incremental solution at this point, so we can continue and get that project going. The seats, as you look at the pictures, you can see the ones on the left, 1995 was the last time these seats were refurbished. They looked nice and fluffy and comfortable. Look to the right, and you'll see the wrinkles on the seats indicate there's no cushion under them anymore. They crumbled away. That's just floating fabric. And the seats are now half as thick as they used to be. The company is gone. They're out of business. We're looking at an historical restoration of 1970s vintage seats. We have found a company that is capable of making their parts fit our system, which reduces costs and vastly speeds the installation. It will not cost us shutdown time in order to accomplish. We'll be able to work it in and around existing events. So we will not lose revenue over, over the course of this installation. The second half, the back half, is less expensive because the first half will include fabric, so that it matches color, armrests. Some of the components will be bought in the first phase, and then when we're ready to proceed with the second phase, it won't be as expensive. Moving on, we have an uninterruptible power supply, a battery backup system. This is what's required for public assembly facilities. In case of a power outage, and you've got 1,400 people in a sealed concrete room, you need emergency egress lighting. And the law says it must be, it must last for 90 minutes. The system has died of old age, and we are making do with various guidelines and working with the fire department to keep it safe and with portable lighting and staff. But that needs to be replaced. And you can see the, the two banks, the two larger cabinets in that, each of those carries 40 truck-size batteries. So there's a total of 80 batteries in that system. It's a large system. And we have some, some preliminary quotes on it. You can see what those are. That's something we're going to have to, to do to stay in compliance. We're looking at an older air conditioning system, much like the one on the library. It's aging, it's aging out, and the cost of maintenance is getting high. It makes sense to replace it at this time. And then the carpeting, well, you can look and see the condition in the pictures for yourself. It's getting torn. It's getting duct taped over thresholds. This does not help us with our marketing. So that is something we're going to want to address when funds are available. Now we're looking at something exterior, curb appeal. This is the slate cladding. It's from a quarry in India. It is actually in the same region as the one that provided the slate for the main library, which was a little red and yellow, but the same material. This material is supposed to be sealed and color-enhanced periodically. Due to the fact that we did this and then immediately went into the Great Recession, it got deferred. So as you can see below, how it is faded and discolored, and a few of the, the tiles have chipped and fallen off. It's reducing the curb appeal again, and that enhances, that, that's not enhance our marketability. So we, it also needs to look good for the community as well. So it's something we should address when the opportunity exists. These are other items that are just basic, the same thing. When people drive up first and they see that parking lot with those cracks and that fade and the, the faded stripes. That's an inexpensive way to, to get immediate jump in curb appeal. When people arrive, it's black and bright and striped and looks maintained. You see the, the bricks in the front entryway? That's our main entrance plaza. They're chipped and sinking. They need to be changed out from a sand set where they just float into a hard mortar set, so that doesn't ever happen again. And then we will be good to go forward. Exterior metalwork is rusting. That needs painting. We need, the east patio has a need to be repaired or replaced, but due to all of the years of drought, there were some subsidence. The concrete sank. Other places where the roots of the trees held it up, and we ended up with disparities that were, became tripping hazards. Public Works saved our bacon by, and our audiences, by grinding it down, so it was no longer a tripping hazard, but that left big unsightly grind marks across the patio. That will need to be, again, improved for our marketability. Going forward, something positive, the drought killed most of the foliage on the site, and it has looked like a vacant lot for a little while. Well, Public Works and their Parks Division has pulled out all the stops, and they have been replanting the entire site with drought-tolerant species, and in a design and a fashion that shows that drought-tolerant species can be beautiful and artistic. That is the first thing you see when you drive onto the property now. Instead of a dead dirt berm, we see this glorious redo, and we are very, very pleased and proud of our Parks Department. Okay, ways to increase usage of revenue. Some of these might involve upgrades that make us more popular as a rental site, or potentially fill holes of things we lack. The audio system, well, I talked about our new speaker system. That's for the audience. On stage, you have speakers that are used for the musicians and the performers to hear each other. You know, if you've got a pounding guitar, you got to hear the keyboard. You got to hear your other voices. You want to stay in tune. We don't have this. People have to rent it to use the theater. So what ends up happening is their production costs are higher, makes us less desirable. That's a fairly inexpensive cost to immediately advance our capabilities and our attractiveness as a rental venue. Other things, stage lighting. We're dealing with hundreds upon hundreds of old halogen, high-energy usage, expensive electricity fixtures. We have over 300 of them. They go up to 1,000 watts. Each of them produces heat. Each of them can be only one color by putting a color filter in front of it. This is no longer current technology. We started moving gradually, as money became available, into LED fixtures that are multicolors, don't produce heat, don't require changes in color, filters, don't require lamp changes. So we save electricity. We save heat, which means more electricity on air conditioning. We save on labor for, for the maintenance of these things. They pay for themselves. And we are, so about a third of the way through, and we, as money becomes available, we just continue this process until eventually we've gotten rid of all of those energy wasters. We are looking, however, they are on an old 1970s vintage backbone. The wiring system is very old, and it needs to be updated. As, you know, you can see pictures of things that have burned up just because the wires broke. They didn't cause any danger. We're in a concrete building, but those pieces stopped working for that day. And so keeping those maintained and running is becoming more and more of a challenge, something we should address as money becomes available. Another opportunity to to improve marketability is something that a lot of the theaters around here have. It's called an orchestra pit lift or elevator. You have an orchestra pit. When you don't need it, you cover it, it becomes a stage extension. We have this, but ours is manual. It takes six hours, six people to change one direction or the other. A system like this, you push a button, it's one minute. And that means more time is available, therefore more rental time is available. It also reduces some of the production costs to the customers and therefore more desirability, more marketability. Okay, we can look at additional revenue streams, things that we haven't really approached yet or haven't approached full heartedly. We could adapt the building to a full scale motion picture capability. I should point out that Manhattan Studios is feet from us. And they've acquired on a number of occasions what our level of projection capability was and whether we'd be suitable for premieres or audience trial runs. It would involve getting a much bigger digital system, bring it up to surround sound. But all of the sound system that we put in would be useful as part of that system. We would just need to extend it. And then we would have new opportunities, new revenue streams, parking lot events.
Jack, before you go on, mayor, may I ask a quick question?
Yeah.
Very quick. Do you have a, and maybe it's later. What would be the cost of the projection and audio upgrades for the full scale motion picture presentation?
I have not yet investigated that.
Thank you.
Outside of our possibilities, parking lot events, farmers markets, food trucks. We dabbled, but haven't really gone wholeheartedly in those in the past. And that was, you know, a good 15, 15, 16 years ago. Trucks have become kind of ubiquitous. I think we should consider that. Other alternatives, the obvious fee increases. We that last year, we had over a million dollars. The last year, we raised our our prices. We went right into a COVID lockdown. We couldn't sticker shock our customers. We were out of business for two years. And when we came back, everybody was stretching to cover the new, more expensive labor costs. So now the money is back. Now the customers have revived. Now is the time we should begin raising our rates. I wouldn't sticker shock them, but I would suggest, you know, maybe a three year incremental increase and get our rates up to what the market will bear. Other things we consider operating a box office. A lot of companies do that, and they add a service charge per ticket and and you know, cover their cost and profit that way. As if we approve all of the capabilities of the building, sponsorship and naming rights might become a possibility. We could try non theater events, weddings, receptions, parties on the patios, things that are not necessarily performing arts, but make use of that building. Marketing is a huge one. We have tried, I'm sorry, let me correct myself. We have consulted with three different times, a company called Economic Research Associates, ERA. It was in the early 90s. Then later on, a a company called AMS. And that was in the early 2000s, and they reported in 2005. And then finally Kurt Swanson Associates. Each of them evaluated the local community market and what might sell, what might work, different modes of operation. All of those are largely out of date as far as the the area market conditions. But the they did come up with many of the same operational options, ways to run your theater. And they kind of come down to pretty much three, producing, presenting and rentals. Producing, you create your own shows, the costs are yours. The risk is high, but you keep all the money and you have complete control over what kind of product you wish to present in your theater. Secondarily is presenting. Presenting, you don't create it, you purchase it. You pay an act to come in, whether it's a concert or a show or a touring event. You have more control over whether or not it appeals to the neighborhood. If you've done your your research, you know what the neighborhood wants to see. You know what your your market is is what's attractive to them. You still have all the costs out of pocket before you sold a single ticket. So the 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 risk is still high, just not as high as producing. Rentals is the way we're currently operating. Very low risk. The entire point is we get the money, they take the risk. So we don't take any any of the gate. We do not take ticket money, we don't sell tickets. We sell a theater to clients who sell tickets. And that system has does not earn as much money because obviously you have to leave room for them to make money. But it also means you're not going to lose, you're not going to lose your shirt because if it doesn't sell well, we got our money. So it's a safe mode of operation. That's how we've been continuing to operate up to this point. And now we're up to staff recommendations that I will pass back.
Thank you, Jack. So after, I mean, Jack did a lot of research on this. And after that, we came up with a list of recommendations we wanted to present to the city council. So I'll walk you through that very quickly. We do recommend they continue current the current operating model, which is rental only. Only as Jack had stated, it is the least risk, almost no risk to us. And we can explore other areas to increase revenue and usage of that facility without changing the modality of it. The second recommendation is to implement an annual user fee increase of 3% per year for the next three fiscal years because we have not raised fees for the facility since 2018. We want to explore parking lot events. We think they could be successful in that space. We would like to prepare a budget response report for the potential costs and the revenue associated with adding the full scale motion picture presentation capabilities that we had mentioned earlier. We think that there's a lot of potential in that option. We want to continue to upgrade our lighting fixtures to LEDs. We're through the way there. We would like to go ahead and prioritize completion of the seat rehab project that we have some money for, but don't have the hole. We don't have enough funds for phase two yet. And we also would like to go ahead and replace the UPS system for emergency egress lighting. We think that's a priority for safety reasons. If funds are available, we would like to go ahead and pursue some of those other deferred maintenance projects that Jack had spoken about. And lastly, we would like to explore contracted marketing for the RV PAC to make sure we get the word out that we have this wonderful facility in the South Bay, make sure we reach as many people as possible. So with that, Jack and I are available to answer any questions the council may have.
Okay. Well, thank you. I mean, it is something, you know, from a cultural arts perspective, that's important to the community. And it seems like the losses on it have been pretty stable, other than the COVID year, somewhere around 600 K a year of output to keep the facility running. And it seems like no matter what we do, that's the number that.
Yeah, and I I think that's a pretty important point, Mayor. Appreciate you bringing it up. And I think it's kudos to Jack and his team over the years. When we first started analyzing the PAC's operations on a P and L basis, our internal service fund and overall net loss or subsidy, if you will, was in the 5 to $700,000 range. The fact that prices have inflated and we now have over a million dollars in revenue, and we have roughly the same or less in terms of overall subsidy, I think is is a tribute to the the hard work of the team. So that's a pretty, when you consider how big this facility is, how it's used as a community center beyond just private rental events, I think that's a pretty fair number for a property like this that's in our recreation fleet.
But it seems like we have a lot of unfunded capital expenses that are building up. And this seems, when you add them up, it's pretty staggering to me.
Yeah, it's big, it can be a big number.
Yeah, and so, you know, I agree with having a BRR, but what I'd like to see is what's the priority record, I mean, you got a whole laundry list. What's the priority recommendations and timing of of those? And how and what's the funding source? Is it all, you know, from the general fund? Or is some of this, what what is self sustaining from this versus, you know, what are you asking us to approve in the budget? And I think that needs to come through as a as a pretty integrated BRR rather than just a laundry list and, you know, what do you want to do? And, you know, take a dart and throw it at work.
Sure, sure. I think, well, there's two two tracks here. So the BRR gives you kind of the potential scenarios for ways to enhance operations, rentability. Those would be kind of investment concepts is the bucket I'd put them in. And then the deferred maintenance items are going to flow through our traditional capital programming evaluation where we're going to look at our general discretionary funds. We're going to look at park and rec facility funds, Quimby funds and other monies, perhaps Measure A grant funds through the county that can be used to perhaps cover these deferred maintenance costs. So there that anything you see from us that's priority, and it'll likely be the UPS system and perhaps phase two of the seating project is going to flow through our capital program as monies are available. We can give you a full itemized list of all of these deferred maintenance items, but we're only going to make recommendations on what we can afford on a year over year capital basis.
Are you looking for blessing on all seven of these tonight?
No, you can't even take formal action on any one of these tonight. These are really just us telling you.
This is a receiving file.
This is a receiving file. The councils, the the strategic planning report was to present to you options for ways to enhance rentability. These would potentially, these are the ways to do that. We can't execute on those options tonight.
Yeah, it seems like short term, all we can do is rental only. It's to me, it's a it's a shame that we're looking with a facility like this at renting the parking lot, which means we're not really using the facility.
Not exclusively. It is often possible to do both. There are times where the daytime use of the parking lot does not interfere with the evening performance capabilities, for instance. And we used to do the food truck festivals, although they weren't well run, they could be. And those things would do run at lunchtime. So these did not interfere with operations. So many things could be done concurrently.
Okay.
Just looking at those extra options.
And we used to have a production company out there, right?
City Glide Orchestra, who they ultimately went belly up.
I mean, is that is that still rental only model?
It it was, they were renting at not for profit.
It seems like that's a kind of.
They were renting at not for profit rates. They were renting at discounted rates, which actually was hurting our bottom line. It was helping theirs, although not enough for them to be successful long term. They did ultimately go BK.
And motion picture, we're not going to compete with commercial. They're already having problems. So it's got to be like special use.
Special use, the types of.
Like screenings, like you were talking.
Focus groups, premieres on occasion. We're the size or larger than the Egyptian downtown in Hollywood. We're bigger than the Chinese theater. So if that's something they're interested in doing, an alternative other film festivals may be possible.
Okay.
And I just had one quick question following up on.
Jane has the floor after.
Oh, sorry. I don't have the button yet.
Let him go first. He's he's. He doesn't have that.
I'm not logged in, so.
Okay.
We'll let you go.
So sorry. Is there is there an opportunity to enhance revenue more than 3% per year, given that we haven't had any rate increases in the last seven years? Since we are running, you know, at a deficit right now, plus we have all of these capital expenditures we have to make over the next few years. Is there an opportunity to fund some of that through, you know, 5% even? Because 3% is hardly inflation at this point over the next three years.
The number is based on trying not to drive people who have been sticker shocked rather heavily by the increases in labor since COVID. Labor has gone up substantially. So they've already withstood fairly large billing from us as recovery because we insist on recovering all of our labor that is provided for these shows. And it's now being recovered at a higher level.
Okay.
So we thought that we would start soft, then move up.
To to Councilman Castle's question, Jack, is is there a potential perhaps for us to implement a deferred maintenance fee for any type of rental use? Where I it would be a fairly nominal fee, but one that would be additive to everything else we do as bit of a capital repair fund?
I think that would be worth considering, yes.
A sinking fund of source?
Yes, I think that's possible.
Something we want to look at as part of the masterpiece schedule update as well. That's a standalone fee. It goes into an account that's sequestered and ultimately would be a source of funding for deferred maintenance items.
And are there no cultural arts grants for infrastructure for cultural?
There used to be, but they've dried up pretty significantly.
Across the board?
We're actually trying to partner with the COG to see, at least for the lighting infrastructure, if there are energy saving grants out there. So they're searching for us right now.
Who's our COG rep?
Me. I just I just met with Eleanor Murphy there handles that. And Kim Fuentes, I've talked to them every time I see them about, hey, what's the city of Redondo doing with you? And what are you doing for the city of Redondo?
Yeah, just had on a a meeting with COG representatives, so with Public Works, looking at incentives and possible grants for both air conditioning and a few other, some lighting energy. They're not huge, but anything that we can get is a good thing.
Yep.
Sure, thanks.
Okay, Councilmember Obaji.
Okay, Jack, you've done this. Thank you, by the way, for your decades of service to Redondo Beach there. And it's impressive, the events that are there. Do you meet every person who comes in and does an event there, essentially like every company? You end up meeting them and hearing from them directly about their experience? What they liked, what they disliked, what needs approval?
Absolutely.
Okay. I I wonder, by the way, from for the city manager, why we didn't increase the fees or contemplate increasing the fees during our last budget cycle? And are we seemingly increasing the fees on everything else?
We hadn't, this was our best year, 2324, we really finally fully recovered. We did consider it internally, but we were hesitant because the market really was struggling post COVID. And there was risk there that it wasn't ever going to fully return. What we achieved last fiscal year was is quite impressive. And I think we're on pace to do that again, are we not?
We're we're getting there, yeah. And the it was a bit of a surprise, to be honest. We exceeded our budget projection by a considerable margin. Previous two years had been terrible. $600,000 is versus, you know, the previous million. So we were ecstatic to see those numbers come in. Now it's time to act.
Thank you and great job. Can you go back to slide one, the budget one, the numbers one? Could we address the revenue side, but we didn't really discuss the expense side? There, that one, yeah, thank you. So what I'm seeing, for example, on production expenses, our profit, if you will, or retained aspects of the production expenses is less than 10%, right? At 219, we should get about 19, $21,000. We end up with 17,000 or 16,000 and change. So do we have any sort of spread that we charge out? Usually if you use an event company, they're like, anything we procure for you, we're going to charge you 20%, 10%.
We haven't at this time. We're just charging straight recovery.
Okay, so that would be the first change I'd want to. Is there a problem, I guess, would you say if we if we did add a 10% surcharge, for example?
It depends on the item. For some of the the equipment rentals, that's very viable. On the largest chunk of it is actually usher services because we do not have, you know, a basically the ability to hire 60 to 100 people, rotate them through, manage them, handle the workman's compensation and their uniforms. So we go to a service and they make a profit. Therefore, if we just pad on to that, it gets even more expensive. So I don't think we could really justify padding on ushers that we're already forcing them to buy.
Let me ask you.
Yeah, go for it.
Do we have a GNA rate build up for the city that we could tack on? It's a standard rate for the administration of subcontract and purchasing.
That's in the ISF, actually. That's a component of the ISF figure.
But can we break out a GNA and just apply it to?
We can. The question is whether or not it's palpable to the market. That's 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 Jack's point is whether or not they're they're willing to. At some point, we're always fighting against what will dissuade somebody from booking and what are they comfortable paying?
Okay, sorry.
Okay, no. So if we could, if we could pull up 2B, please. Just want to, I made a spreadsheet of all the suggested in the staff report, deferred maintenance. So deferred maintenance adds up to 2.03, let me zoom out a little. 2.03 million, right? And because of your experience, Jack, because you've had the interaction with the different people who've rented the facility, I fully trust in you to determine what it is we need to address first and where we need to put the money first. And then there's the kind of the the pluses, the upgrades of 1.42 million dollars to generate a grand total of 3.45 million for both. So on the subject of the movie theater or full scale movies, what makes us think that people would want to come to these seats, which as old as they are and as comfortable as we may make them, are still not going to be the bucket seats that they have at the AMC at the Galleria? What makes us think that people are going to want to come watch movies here?
I don't think these are really more of a question, with the exception of possible film festivals. These are really not the question of selling tickets. When we're doing focus groups and premieres, those are typically something that are invited. And so it's really the studio renting the theater to hold their event. That's what we're really, that's what we're mainly looking at.
We think there's a market for that.
We've been asked enough times that it it's certainly worth considering. I think we can do the research, we can make the contacts, and if it doesn't pan out, we haven't spent a cent.
All right. And if we do encounter in the next year, an economic recession of one, two quarters, three quarters, which part of the bookings that we have right now are going to be most impacted?
Probably the nonprofits. And we have a significant number. And we have a significant number of children's dance recitals, where if the cost goes too high, they go. We, I could say that you could, even some of the R&B concerts are really done as school fundraisers. Since we have one called Reaching Educational Milestones, they produce a bunch of old-school R&B music, but they donate a great deal of their money to educational opportunities. And if it gets too expensive, they'll look for something cheaper. Or they will just simply go out of business, depending. The dance competitions will go on. Those people are, that's a license to print money, and those guys just keep coming back, coming back, coming back. And we'll take as many of those as we can get, but they don't help us sell the building, because they don't sell tickets. They're not really well-publicized. They're more private events. So I think we're, the ones that are mostly going to get hurt are our local companies, churches, schools, graduations. These are, these are running at the edge of their available budget as is.
Okay. So I guess in conclusion, I'll say, thank you for your work to get it up to the production level and the revenue generation level that it's gotten. I would like to do anything we can do within the confines of what money we have available in the city to reinvest into our facilities, which historically is not something the city's done well, right? Historic library, didn't take any of the revenue from the historic library and put it back in. Here, it seems like we're doing the same thing, granted, we're not able to retain, and there's no, there's no real profit for the city here. So yeah, I think come budget time, let us know what it is you think is going to bring back to the Performing Arts Center the biggest bang for, for the buck. And we'll try, I'll try to support you. Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Waller.
Thank you. Great report. Encouraging, discouraging at the same time. I would definitely like to see if we did any kind of a surcharge, that that money was then earmarked for the Performing Arts Center and couldn't be siphoned off anywhere. Few thoughts as we went through that. The huge ups for the emergency lighting. If the emergency lighting was LED or if we had a generator, would that be long run, less costly than replacing the eight tons of battery, of lead-acid batteries that you've got there?
The fact is, that is a very good question, because we've actually started, started doing exactly that. We started replacing a great deal of the architectural lighting within the building with LEDs to reduce the load. And we are shopping for a machine that is less large than what we, what preceded it. And the cost has simply gone up. Electronics are coming from China, there's tariffs, there's a, a variety of equipment that requires rare earth materials. Everything has simply gone up since COVID. But if we had gone to the same size as our current unit, it would have cost a lot more. And we are still continuing. There's one large section of house lighting, the auditorium lights itself. Those are still 500-watt halogens, and there are 76 of them. So these are an opportunity for big reductions.
We're talking about parking lot events. We have two farmers' markets in the south. So that would be a great opportunity to expand to the north. Probably would want to talk to the RVA or the people that run the, the, the one over by the pier. I guess actually both of those are in District One, now that I think about it. But I, I think, you know, startup, it may not be making that much money, but long run, farmers' markets can be a good resource, and it's a good thing for the community as well. So I, I'd love to see a farmer's market at that location. From a sponsorship standpoint, when Sony comes to you and says, we'd love to do a premiere there, have you said, well, you know, we could call this the Sony Pictures Entertainment, whatever, if you could pay for the stuff that you need, you know? I think, I love the idea of having premieres there, but the market's not that big. So without any kind of major sponsorship, I don't see that being that, that, that possible. And then you touched on also the management model. Right now, it's rentals only. And I like the idea. You talked about the hybrid model that some other cities are doing. It's more work, a little bit of risk, but if we think we can do that to improve the revenue situation for that facility, it's, it's a signature facility, especially for the north part of the city. And I'd love to see us figure out how to turn that into something that doesn't cost us as much money and becomes self-sustaining and grows. So I'm definitely in support of getting some stuff, getting the BRRs, looking at it and seeing what fits into our plans and what we can do.
Okay, so you're just looking for a motion to receivable file tonight. And you're going to come back with a more detailed BRR during the budget season that we can digest and.
And perhaps some recommended capital funding if we can identify a source.
Okay, can I get a motion to receivable file?
I moved the receivable file. Second.
Okay, we have a motion to second. Anyone from the audience wish to look at this item?
Brilliant idea to hire you. Who better knows the Performing Arts Center? Mike, it's probably your idea. Wonderful. Thank you, thank you. What a wonderful presentation. I think, because I was on the Public Art Commission for 10 years, I don't think there's been a better individual to do this job since John LaRocque. I mean, there's been, Elizabeth's done a great job in an interim basis, but wonderful. When they were doing fundraising, I think it was like 30 years ago, and I think it was the individual through the Civic Light Opera, I think there was something called Brick by Brick, where people were investing money because a community was brought in to be involved. If, I'm thinking of Palos Verdes Art Center, too. They have a whole wall of people that have invested. But that requires bringing the community in in some way, the community's interest to invest, because that facility, our facility, could be incorporating an interest such as community orchestra or ballet. And we do have a ballet now. Redondo Beach does have a ballet, which is exciting. So maybe if the community is more involved and we're giving them something that they want, then we'll have more donors or we'll have donors. So that could be really exciting. And then to have something displayed with their name, like you had suggested too. So this is exciting. This is really exciting. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else?
Hello, it's Andy Porchop again. Beautiful presentation, but it's hard to see that, you know, a huge building like this got neglected all these decades. And, you know, breaking even with a facility like this, that's a shame. That's just a shame. It's not even breaking even. It's a little bit more spending than bringing it in. All the ideas are nice, but let's face it, for centuries, art was, you know, how you call them, existed because rich people pushed it. You know what I mean? So all the theaters, all the movies and everything. But in America, with the great entertainment, you know, the vaudeville theaters and the movies, they made big money because they created the program, but people went and paid for it. But now, I'm sitting at home, I turn on my computer, I'm a YouTube junkie, you know? So you cannot tell me an art or entertainment thing, what, I, I don't find it on YouTube or on the internet. I used to sell arts, like books, records, all kinds of things, and it just died. It died. Nobody buys records anymore. Nobody buys CDs anymore. Nobody goes to the movies anymore. Why would I go to the movies? Why? You know, it's a great idea, bringing in movies or this or that, but the, the, the best idea, you know, was like farmer's market or food trucks, you know, people, people into the food, you know, they don't want to pay $50. They'd rather pay $10, you know what I mean? Like food, food truck fests, you know, all week, and that would be great. But it's hard to give, give ideas, but the sad thing is, people pretty much poor, you know what I mean? They don't have money to spend, you know what I mean? And this is just behind also that, because it looked to me, this building was neglected for decades. Just let's face it, you know what I mean? I was there once, did the orientation meeting, did not spend any time or money. Whoever had the orientation, they paid for it. And this is just a very hard thing. My best advice would be, because, you know, I'm here to help, find somebody who interested to manage it. And then, you know, you lease it up, you keep up a few dates when the city needs it, and let the private company make money and pay you the toll. Because as Mr. Obaji said, you know, you're looking at $3 million. You have $3 million, and then after you have to bring that back, you know, money. So I think a private company manages it, it would be the best. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone online?
No one online, no ecomments.
Okay, I'm going to call the vote then. All four? Okay. Thank you. Let's see, N3, discussion and possible action regarding the amendment of the Redondo Beach Municipal Code camping ordinance.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Joy Ford, City Attorney. Tonight, we are discussing a strategic plan objective to evaluate recent anti-camping court decisions and report to City Council on any recommended corresponding modifications to the Redondo Beach Municipal Code. In 2020, the City Council amended our municipal code so that it was in compliance to the Martin v. Boise case, which found that enforcing a camping ordinance without an available bed would be a violation of the Eighth Amendment. And so that was in response to the Martin v. Boise case. And since then, in June of 2024, the United States Supreme Court passed the Grants Pass versus Johnson case, which overruled the Martin versus Boise case. And so our recommendation is to amend our camping ordinance again so that it is back to what it was originally, prior to December of 2020. And up until today, former City Attorney Mike Webb was the president of the Los Angeles County Prosecutors Association, and they had formed a subcommittee to discuss Grants Pass and potential amendments to cities' ordinances in terms of their camping. And one of the recommendations we thought the council might want to consider would be an ordinance prohibiting using a bus stop for any purpose other than to board or wait or disembark a bus. That is completely up to the council. That's not something we have to pass. So we did blue folder, two versions of the ordinance for your consideration.
So it looks like you're striking the 500 yards of the emergency transitional housing facility?
So going back to what our ordinance was prior to December 2020, it, it would just be no camping in all public places of the city. So that would include surrounding the, the emergency interim shelters.
So you're saying in each case, A, B, C, and D already cover it?
Yes.
Okay.
Those would remain.
And then you're striking the whole enforcement?
The enforcement part was just specifically for the Martin versus Boise opinion, where we put in the time.
And because we've got a new ruling on that, we don't need that?
Correct.
Okay. And then you're adding the bus stops?
If council so chooses.
So you're asking us to do all of that? We have, do we have to at least strike the red ones?
To be in compliance with the law. If we leave it the way it is, it just would not be.
Enforced.
Enforced, yes.
Okay. So there's two options. I mean, one, we could just eliminate that, the other is we could also add this bus stop thing. And I, I think I was talking to you guys earlier, you don't see that as a panacea to, to say, you know, we can't write this for other public facilities, correct?
Correct. It's already pushing the limits as it is, but this is a very specific ordinance. So it, it is taking a risk. If enforced, it, the city can be challenged. And it, I'm not aware that Torrance has enforced this ordinance either. So it's, it's a new thing that we thought council might want to consider, since we are getting complaints about people staying at the bus locations.
Okay, so you're looking for us approving the ordinance either as written or the, the recommended changes or pulling the bus stops and still approving the rest?
Correct.
Or doing nothing?
Correct.
Those are the three options. Okay, Councilmember Castle.
Excuse me. So I have one quick question about the bus stops. Since the bus stops typically are on the public sidewalk, and essentially a bus stop is giving someone permission to stop and stay there on the public sidewalk for using it as a bus stop. If they're not there, then they're just on the sidewalk. Would that still be covered? This is if they were not under a bus stop, let's just say.
So camping has a specific definition in our municipal code. And if it's not, if, if their actions or what they're doing does not fit under the definition of camping, then if they're just there, that's legal.
Right, okay. And so your recommendation would be to include the bus stops specifically in our case?
Well, no, it's redefined. It's not, that's not a camping. That's, if you, if you sit, stand, or lie down at the bus stop for more than two hours, or we can, we, we, we stop by in a two-hour period and you're still there.
Right.
So that's not necessarily camping. That's saying, stay away from the bus stop.
When you're not using.
Period, unless you're going to use it to get on the bus.
Right, okay.
Correct.
If I.
Yes, that's correct.
And for the, for the bus stop, is it, my reading of that is, you see them there as long as it's been more than four hours?
So we added, we added a permissible inference in that if the people can prove beyond a reasonable doubt that someone was staying at that same location at, in two instances within 24 hours, but they were more than four hours apart, then the trier of fact could permissibly infer that they remained there the whole time. For purposes other than, that was the range that we agreed on. Council could change that.
I just wanted to make sure it wasn't too short, because I've seen people, it's like, I'm going to eat my lunch at the bus stop. And I don't want somebody saying, I were going to cite you because you stayed at the bus stop for an hour. So an hour would be too short. Four hours might be too long, I don't know.
Okay, Councilmember Kalajerevich.
So you said that this is something that Torrance has done?
Yes, they have passed it, but I'm not aware if they have enforced it.
When did they pass it?
They passed this, I believe, in October.
Okay, so shortly after the ruling.
Yes.
Okay, that's all I have right now.
Okay, Councilmember Barrett.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I had a question about the blue folder item we received.
Which one do you want her to light up?
Yeah, 2B.
2B, okay.
Please. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Eleanor. I just made this proposed change and track changes. To more clearly specify, it's not so much if a person, if the people prove beyond a reasonable doubt that a person is at a bus site, it's that if they prove beyond reasonable doubt that a person is, going back to subdivision A, standing, sitting, or lying down in or upon any bus site. Is that better, the way it is?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Have any other cities, Orange County comes to mind? Have any other cities you know about, Santa Ana or Anaheim, done a bus stop site?
I'm not, I'm not aware of any other city doing this, other than Torrance.
You feel good about this as far as its potential enforceability, if we were to go forward with it?
I mean, every ordinance comes with its risks, but as we have drafted it, I think it stands a good chance to be defensible.
As drafted, on its phase, it's fine?
Yes.
Okay, all right. I'm fine with what's been proposed. I don't see anything controversial about it. I want to hear from other council members and the public.
Your last one with your hand up, so you want to make a motion?
Oh.
Councilmember Obaji.
Question. I like those changes that Councilmember Barrett made. If we do have somebody sleeping on the bus, at the bus stop, like I just saw a person yesterday or the day before, and when they're approached. when they're approached, are they approached by folks offering services? Or are they approached by law enforcement to enforce this no camping law?
It depends on who sees the person, who makes the complaint.
Me, I made the call requesting services.
So are you calling dispatch?
Yeah.
So, and it also depends on the time of day. So if a housing navigator is available, normally our dispatch will try to dispatch that person first, namely Lila. She does have her radio, and she's available by cellphone. So if she's available, we try to always send a housing navigator first, compassionate enforcement. If, if it seems like it's an emergency or that person is not doing well, then we would send the appropriate, either law enforcement or paramedics.
Okay, does anybody wanna make a motion?
I'll make a motion. To introduce by title only ordinance number 3293-25, amending municipal code chapter 34 to Title IV regarding unlawful camping for introduction and first reading. By, by title only.
Excuse me?
By title only. And with, if you could put that back up again.
Changes that you.
Yeah, the changes that I showed to the blue folder item and track changes.
That's correct.
What's that?
As amended.
As amended, yes, and I'll send that to you.
Second.
Okay, motion and a second. Any member of the public wish to address the council on this item?
Hi, this is Andy Porchop. Homelessness and dealing with the homeless is pretty close to my heart because I used to be a homeless and I used to live in my van for three years. And the difference with me was, I'm not mentally ill. You know, people try to say that I'm mentally ill, but I'm not. And I actually love to live in my van, you know, no phone calls, no bills, you know, no problems. But unfortunately, what I see, what the, you know, cities bringing these ordinances, like you cannot even sit in the park bench, you know, or a bus stop, you know? Okay, so if I sit there, nobody says a word, you know? But if a homeless sit there, abuse with their bag luggage and everything, and they look. So then they, in Torrance, they call the, you know, the van. We have a van now in Torrance. Anyway, but, but here you don't, but anyway. So if a homeless, homeless sleeping on a bench or at the bench, and then the police gonna kick him out, I have a video of it, then where that person gonna go? Where that person gonna go? You're gonna have an ordinance that does absolutely nothing. Because if you ask these homeless people, the worst thing, they wanna end up in a homeless shelter. You try to have a sleep in a homeless shelter with other people, and you wake up, and your belongings are there. People losing their identification, people losing everything, sleeping in a shelter. You know what I mean? The last thing for me was hanging out with the other homeless people. I did not look for their company, ever. I did not wanna be worse, I wanted to get out of the situation. So making ordinances that you cannot do this, you cannot do that, it's all nice, but what the person gonna do? What the person gonna do? And the very sad thing in California, after $25 billion spent on the homeless, we have more homeless in every city, every county, and the whole California. With all this effort, all this money, all this, oh, you cannot stand here, or you cannot sit down here, or you cannot set up the tent here, or all these ordinances, what does it does for the homeless? What does that for the, for the homeless? You know, they shipping them out, you know? The homeless doesn't even wanna go with the ambulance because I know these homeless is because I'm people watching. That's the last thing you see, see a homeless person on the street when the ambulance take it. I don't know where they take them, I don't know what happened to them, but that's the last time I see them. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone online?
I have none.
Any comments?
No ecomments.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor, all four.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay.
Introduction by title only ordinance number 3293-25, amending municipal code chapter 34 to Title IV regarding unlawful camping for introduction and first reading as amended. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now to item N4. I'm wondering if we can truncate this? I had a sit down with City Attorney Ford and former City Attorney Webb, and I think I understand what they were driving at, what they, I think the best action for the council is to review and, and alter and adopt the, I forget the one that starts with an R.
Rosenberg.
Rosenberg rules. And I already had the action from the council to come back with the rules of engage, rules of conduct for the city council. I was waiting to get this to move forward. I can move forward with that now that we have a recommendation from the city attorney. The only other, the only other item in there that I would ask the councils, we already have written into our code of conduct the 10:30 cutoff time and addressing that. Would you like, do you, that, we don't need anything for that. I just need to know, do you want me to enforce that? So, so that's the two things I would recommend, just to kind of continue this, and then we can come back in detail. Shouldn't take me more than, let's see, we're in April. I would say in May, I could come back with the adapted, my recommended adapted rules for the.
For discussion.
For, for discussion of the council, yeah.
You'll take.
And may I just add that former City Attorney Webb also recommended that you consider amending your ex parte communications rules as well.
Yeah, and I'll take a look at that as well.
So, just to be clear on what you said, you would, with the information that's been presented in this agenda item, is the information you were waiting on, and you can kind of move forward and bring this back in May with some suggested?
Yes, that we can.
Changes for discussion.
I'll put together a briefing on what I adopted out of what City Attorney Webb recommended, and, and why, and then you can choose to put it back in or take it out or alter what I came up with in my adaptation of the, the rules. And I, I understand why this came forward and became very clear to me. So the, the thing that we kept doing, it happened multiple times just since I've been here, we go to the city attorney for parliamentary rule, which isn't their job, because we haven't adapted anything for them to rule against. And this is, this would fix that problem. So. Councilmember Barrett, I'm sorry.
Well, thank you, Mayor. And so just to be clear, we don't have formal rules of procedure here, Roberts rules or anything else. So the idea is, thank you City Attorney's Office, they provided us the Rosenberg rules, which you're gonna take a look at and come back with recommendations on how we can have something codified. I use that term loosely with respect to how these meetings are run.
Yes.
Okay. All right. And then your second point was on, we actually have a rule in place regarding a 11.
10:30, we're supposed to assess whether we continue going or not?
Continue going.
After 11.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right.
And that, and so that one's been interesting because, and we could come back and talk about it. It seems like it's always kind of worked itself out, either because we turn to the city manager and say, is there anything? We can continue to a later time. So I'm just kind of thinking through, if we follow that rule, sort of speak, is it going to actually take more time to go through? I don't, Mr. City Manager, I don't know if you give any thought to that?
Yeah, in my, in my experience, I, I sort of answered this question in two ways. I, I think having some sort of a time check where we're all trying to work towards a reasonable goal of completing business inside of, you know, before midnight, right? The goal is to make sure we're making good quality decisions when we're able-bodied, well-rested, and not blurry-eyed and feeling the effects of the long night. So I think having a target is good, but in the practical experience that I think we've had since implementing that 10:30 rule, is we spend more time talking about what we're gonna talk about than we do ultimately talking about it. So I, that part hasn't, has been a little bit counterproductive, I think, in our past experience.
Okay.
And you're absolutely right. Typically, it starts with what can we defer to the next meeting, and then you all quickly coalesce around that. And then we spend perhaps 20 minutes talking about what we'll spend the final 30 minutes of the night talking about. So to the extent that we can avoid that, and, and maybe we set a more of a policy statement where if there's, if it's looking like we're gonna blow past 11 o'clock or 10:30, you have a, you have a conversation, a quick one. But yeah, I, I don't know if there's a real clean way. You can even, you can get rid of it, and we just do business and until you get tired and call for a recess and defer whatever's there. But you might want to have some sort of time out there where you do a check-in, where you at least stop and reflect on it.
I can write that in in a more loose fashion than, than a mandy.
Yeah, you could do that, and that'll also give time for the newest council members to get a feeling. And we get a feeling is how we work together as well, and so, okay.
We've rarely gone past 10:30 anyway, since I've been.
Yeah, we've been pretty good over the last year. We balance the agendas, we have a few exceptions.
I think the budget, and, you know, there's some big issues that we probably wouldn't truncate anyway, but.
All right. And related to that, and if this is somehow outside the agenda item, I could talk about it maybe with referrals to staff. But you mentioned making good quality decisions, not late in the evening. The way the agenda is set up now, we do like agency business in the beginning. And a lot of that.
Let me, I, I'll include that in my recommendation.
All right. Yeah, so just to get the full thought out, it's perfunctory, and we spend 10, 15 minutes on agency stuff. Maybe we can move that to the end of the evening where less sort of mental acuity is involved. Now, look, if we have a very important housing issue for the agency, let's do that. Or if we have somebody here to speak, would you have the flexibility to move that to the front? And otherwise, as a default, have agency at the end of the night?
Sure, if you give us, if you give us that discretion, we're happy to, to target it as appropriate based on what is time-sensitive, what isn't, what requires the most attention, or what is likely to have the most eyeballs or public speakers. We do that with the discussion items now. We tend to try to orient it in a way that starts with public focus and council priority first.
Okay. And then on a related topic, currently, we do 30 minutes of public participation on non-agenda i, yeah, non-agenda items at the very beginning of the evening. Sometimes, maybe not so much tonight, but sometimes, in fact, usually, we have public here to participate on agenda items. And by having those non-agenda, discussion on non-agenda items before, I don't want to call it a cut to the front of the line, but, you know, we, we have agenda, agendized items. We have people here to speak on them. And so maybe we move the 30-minute public participation on non-agenda items to later. This also goes to what I'll, again, loosely refer to as the mental acuity. You, you said good quality decisions. That extra 30 minutes, if we move those non-agenda, public participation on non-agenda items to the end of the evening, we're gonna pay attention, we're gonna be ready, we're going to listen. But we may not need to make sort of a very important judgment call at that late hour, right?
Absolutely, and, and I think a point you've made to me offline as well is that typically your only response to comments on non-agenda items, if you want to react to them, is through a referral to staff.
Yes, referral, so.
You could, you could organize those two in sequence to where you're paying attention, listening, and then the referral is, hey, Mr. City Manager, what can we do to respond to, you know, our, our residents' concern over regarding X? And we could talk about that briefly.
All right. Well, thank you, Mr. City Manager. Thank you, Mayor. Those were, those were my thoughts.
Okay, Councilmember Waller.
Thank you. I'll go in reverse order of what I wrote down. With all due respect to Councilmember Barrett, I'm worried that pushing public comment to the end is a way of discour, making it look like we're discouraging public comment by saying, hey, if you can make it till midnight, we can let you talk. And so I'm a little bit worried about that one. I've been to meetings in the past, I've been coming to meetings a long time, where the 10:30 rule was invoked and discussed. And yes, I think we need a better procedure for doing it, but I like having some sort, some sort of cutoff that is best practice mandated, however we put it. You know, work on your, work on the rules, I'd love to see a proposal there. I don't want to have 20 minutes of discussion to talk about how we take 20 minutes off the meeting. But by having those limits, it does kind of force the hand a little bit and say, look, we're not gonna get done in time. We have to be fair to members of the public that are here to hear an item. And going to 4:00 in the morning, yeah, that, that's a nonstarter. We can't do that for people in the public. And then for the rules.
Well, there were some unique constraints, there are a number of meetings.
Yeah, yeah.
So I wouldn't call that a normal.
True. But I, I've, I've been here past midnight at meetings and as an observer. And then finally, with regards to the rules, Rosenberg's rules look pretty good. I was a parliamentarian for California State PTA for two years where I had to enforce, this is Roberts rules. It's like, you saw the Rosenberg rules? That was like just a few pages? This is way overkill, way overkill. So I like the idea of how it is simpler, more efficient. It's definitely a refreshing change compared to the rigorous structure that we get with Roberts rules. So as long as that we have something that allows some procedure, encourages debate, and, you know, but has structure so we know how we're supposed to do things, who's supposed to speak, who's allowed to make a motion, for example. You know, can the chair make a motion or not? That, I think that's the kind of things that we want to have in the rules. But if it can be stated in 10 pages or less, less, that would be great. So I, I look forward to seeing what you're gonna propose to us.
Okay. So how about a motion to continue until May?
I move that we continue this until the May, the first meeting in May. I don't have that date.
Oh, give some flexibility, because we don't know what, I want to work with the city manager on where that fits without overburdening the agenda.
What I meant to say was, I move that we continue this until the May.
One other item, I'm not advocating, I'm sorry, your hands up?
Councilmember Kalajerevich. Councilmember Abaji. The idea was to get this so we can, I mean, should we just go through the presentation and talk through it all? Okay.
No, but, but, but I, but I think that there's some things that are probably important to getting your rules, and maybe you're not thinking about them.
You can email me.
Okay, yeah, sure. But we observed, for example, last week at another city's council meeting, how they spent half an hour on what items were gonna be on the agenda, while items were not, because they were proving the order of the agenda, and they wanted to pull things. And some wanted some things on, some didn't want other things on, or, you know, whatever. And so they weren't aligned on one particular motion. So they just, you know, we're negotiating the motion the whole time instead of making like a substitute motion. So what I'd like clarity on ideally in our rules is, look, you make a motion, you can offer a friendly amendment, or if it's rejected, you can make a substitute motion. And then there could be one more substitute that we have a cap on, you know, that's, that's the number, and so on and so forth. So that the commissioners also can have a copy of it.
I will write it for commissioners as well as the council.
Yes, and that's important. I do, I do like Councilmember Barrett's idea of public participation on non-agendized items being right before referrals to staff, because then we can act on them. Whereas now, it's like, there, there's the, you know, prompt to, to take action, and then a whole bunch of discussion about totally different things, and then try to remember at midnight, you know, the referral that needs to be made. With that said, I'm also sensitive to the idea that maybe people aren't gonna be able to stay, stay up till 11:30 to make a referral. So maybe we just have a cutoff that, at that 11:00 PM cutoff, we're gonna have public participation on non-agendized items, right?
You have to, if we cut, if we truncate early, and that's at the end, you have to have that.
All right, and I'll say that there's precedent for it. Metro does their meetings, in their meetings, they do their non-agendized comment at the end of the meeting. Granted, their meetings are in the afternoon, but. Could always, we could also always revisit starting our meetings a little earlier.
That was my item. I'll just pick up on it.
I got shot down my first weekend here, whatever.
Let me just get this.
Be toed it.
Before we even go into that, I, I just want to say, and I'm not advocating for it, we have a new council. If folks wanted to start earlier, we can consider it. My only caveat would be if any single council member or mayor says, no, let's not force it upon anyone, if someone says, like, I can't do it. You want me to repeat all that?
Sorry.
Yeah, sorry. Yeah, sorry.
Revisiting history for a second.
Just saying, we have a new council, different, you know, if people have different schedules, if folks wanted to consider starting earlier, I'm happy to have that discussion with one caveat, which is if any single council member or the mayor says, I can't start earlier or prefer not to start earlier, that we not force the issue upon someone. That's it.
And that means we start closed session early.
Yeah.
Okay.
So.
Okay. Councilmember Kali Jerovic.
Right, just to get my thoughts on these items that brought up, that were brought up so that while you're drafting whatever comes before us in May, you know, I think the start time is a discussion that could also lend itself to alleviating some pressure for public comment being late in the evening. With public comment, I, at this point, would lean towards having it near referrals, towards the bottom of the agenda. I do think it, it's important to have public comment, but I want to also give deference to those who want to talk about items of business on the agenda. And there are other ways for the public to interact with us, emails, and we all get them. So I just want to make those points. And then I do think it's important at least to have a structure of how we're going to have some cutoff to the meetings. We don't necessarily have to have a procedural discussion every time, but just that it's there. I wouldn't want, I wouldn't really be in favor of eliminating that. That's it.
Me too.
Councilmember Waller.
Very quick, in these rules, think about a way of making it so if we have people that are calling in remotely, that we have identified them so we know the person who is calling. If somebody comes up here, they identify themselves. If our code of conduct that we're coming up with should also include remote people.
I think we can ask, they don't have to answer.
Right. That's correct.
You can be anonymous.
Correct.
Councilmember Abaji.
On the public participation, let's recall that we allow people on non-agendized items to call in. Other, we just heard Hermosa Beach, unless it's on the agenda, you're not able to call in. So that's one liberty. And the second point, I totally forgot. Okay.
You can talk to me after. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Any member of the public wish to address this?
Joan Irvine, District One. I must say, I really disagree with moving the, you know, non-agenda public items to later in the meeting, because I do think that you're going to eliminate a lot of people who are able to use that time to bring forth, you know, items that they want to be discussing. I don't think you're going to have people sticking around till, you know, I'm here, I stuck around because of this topic. I don't think you're going to have a lot of people sticking around and so that you're going to really alienate, you know, a number of the people, you know, public. Also, I think one of the things you're talking about, people calling in, I know there's free speech. I was on the board of the Free Speech Coalition, but when we have people calling in, just making a mockery, you know, of what's, you know, what's going on like we had tonight, you know, I just, I don't know if there's anything that we can do to prevent that because of free speech, you know, because that, that was just such a waste of our time and such a mockery of our system that somebody was doing that. So I think that's, you know, really important. And then I don't know, you know, and this is going to be, you know, is it something that, you know, we have Redondo residents, you know, can we limit it to Redondo residents? You know, I know, I know we can, you know, but it's, there's just things that, you know, I think that we really need to consider the public and, you know, that the people who live here, who, you know, are involved here are, you know, really very much part of this. So that, you know, I just, I want the, I know, I think it's important for the engagement, but, you know, it's also the rule of conduct. And also, you know, with the rule of conduct, I mean, my understanding, and I may be incorrect, and I know you're not allowed to respond to me, is that, you know, you're not supposed to, if I'm correct, that you're not supposed to make reference to or negative reference to comments that prior people have made during public comment. So, I mean, I just think whatever is done, you really need to at the beginning, at least for a while, at the beginning of every meeting, to really be able to explain what the code of conduct is so that people know how to follow that and also to be able to apply this to some of the commission meetings. Because there was a, I think it was a planning commission meeting that they had two items they were supposed to address and they talked about everything else but. So I think it's really important to, you know, transfer whatever it's going to be doing, you know, to the commissions so that they know what they're working from too. So thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone on?
Hello, everyone, this is Andy Porchak again. I started to observe the Toronto City Council meeting because the atrocities went down there. And I studied the Bay Act, you know, not the Bay Act, the Brown Act, and I find out the city of Toronto's violated dozens of times the Bay Act, I mean, the Brown Act. And these meetings are, how you call them, governed by the Brown Act. So you have to adhere to the rules, you know, it's, it's a public comment, the freedom of speech and all that. But what this guy did, let me see his name exactly, Philip Norman Warner, what he did, he's intimidating me. He actually made a criminal act exposing my identity, but I'm not ashamed, not, not ashamed of it, except it's Toronto City Council named the Porchak. You know what I mean? And I use this name representing how scumbags are the city council. And if I don't agree with their policies or I don't speak up in a positive manner, I got these guys like Philip Norman Warner. And you could make a rule, if some scumbag like this goes in, he has the freedom of speech, you know, he distorts my speeches, my videos, stealing my videos. They could listen to it, it could be recorded, you know, and this was, this was not a person talking, this was an artificial, artificial noise, voice. So intimidating a citizen and you have the right to switch him off. You didn't. This was the second time, all of you, not you, not you guys, sit here and did not say, cut it. You know what I mean? You committed a violation of the Brown Act. Yes, you did. Because this was intimidation and other, I don't have the right word for that. This is not what you allowed to, a person who comes here and speaks like a person, not a scumbag hiding behind the artificial voice, you know? I'm going to look this up and the next meeting, I'm going to tell you what violations were there. And you should change your rules, listen to this. You know, you have 30 seconds delay of my speaking, right there, 30 seconds delay. What was the delay here?
Thank you, keep your time down. Thank you. Anyone online?
Yes, I have Nancy Skiba.
Good evening again. Hi, good evening again, Mayor and City Council. I don't really like this idea of moving the public participation toward the end of the meeting, because a lot of people simply can't stay that long or they can't stay up that late, perhaps they have a job, they have to get too early in the morning and so on. And I'm afraid that it could possibly have people feel that their rights to speech are being impeded or restricted. And perhaps when you have guests there who are going to give a presentation, perhaps they could move the order in which that person's going to speak ahead of some of the other items, you know, on your list, on the agenda, to allow them to get heard sooner and because the public participation is only 30 minutes. Just my opinion, thank you.
Thank you.
That's it, that concludes the comments.
Okay, so we have a motion to continue to May. I'll call the vote. All four?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, let's see, what's next? City manager items.
Just two this evening, Mayor, well, three really. Another more official welcome to our new, new council colleagues here. It's great to have you, look forward to all the work that we have ahead of us. Welcome to the team and welcome to hopefully one of, only a handful of 10:30 evenings that, but we are here on Tuesday nights. Like to also formally introduce, although many of you have met her offline, Jane Chung, our new assistant to the city manager who's here in the crowd this evening. She's the new addition to our city manager office team along with Luke there. We are fully staffed at three, we're excited about that. And then I do also want to announce to the community and the council that I have made an appointment for our finance director position. I have appointed Stephanie Meyer as our finance director, promoting her from the assistant finance director position formally. I know Councilmember Castle's worked with, with her through the Budget Finance Commission, but she has been selected through a very competitive process and made that announcement internally last week, but did want to let you all know formally that that has occurred. And you will now see her, and you may have seen it actually on tonight's agenda, there was no longer the acting tag to her moniker. So happy to have her take that role. She's done a tremendous job for us in the, in the acting capacity and we look forward to great things from her and quickly moving towards hiring her replacement as assistant finance director. So pleased to have her join the officially, officially join the executive team. That's it.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Mayor and Council referrals to staff. Councilmember Waller.
I would like to have a BRR for signage and traffic studies to help with the improper driving of trucks on the non-truck routes and to update the mapping services used by trucking companies for proper marking of these non-truck routes in Redondo Beach.
So cost of, so cost of new signage and then any, any studies that would be, any related traffic studies that could be helpful? And then it sounds like there's a new, is it an app?
Well, the, the mapping services that may be indicating where truck routes are that they use.
Truck routes.
If we're going to do any updates or if there are signs, let's make sure that those.
Are included, those, those systems receive that update.
Yeah, I don't know what the cost could be, it could just be the cost of time for a phone call, couple emails, I don't know, but trying to be as comprehensive as possible.
We can do that.
Councilmember Castle.
Nothing tonight.
Councilmember Kali Jerovic.
None, thank you.
Councilmember Abaji.
Just BRRs, please. The cost to resport court, the General Homer O'Eden Jr. Parquet and new basketball hoops there, they're missing, I think, one hoop. I'm not sure if the other one's in good condition, but one or two new basketball hoops. And also a BRR, I guess it could be the same thing for a dog run there, a little dog run, because basically there's another parquet where dogs are allowed, but kids are at that parquet. This one would be more suitable for it, so I just like to get the cost of building one of those little enclosures.
So a small dog run at that?
Yes.
Okay.
For smaller, kind of like Chihuahuas?
Similar kind of.
Dotson, Dotson. Chihuahuas and Dotsons.
He's kind of fun after like 10:30.
Councilmember Barant. None, thank you. Okay, I don't have any, but since we missed announcements tonight because of the things, I just wanted to let the council know that there's a, Mayor Bass has called a mayor's meeting for Saturday regarding the World Cup and Olympics. So I will be attending that, it's mayor's only, and I'll report back to, back to you guys what comes out of that.
Close session.
Yeah, we're adjourning to closed session, but I would like people to know that when we adjourn after closed session, we are adjourning, we won't have a meeting next week, we will have a special meeting at 4:30 closed session, regular meeting at 6:00 PM on April 15th. So that's what we'll be adjourning to, no meeting this coming Tuesday. And that's because it's a spring break, a lot of absences. Okay, with that, I'll entertain a motion to recess to closed session.
I'm moved.
A motion to second, all four?
Aye.
Okay, we will go to closed session, we'll come back and report out.
I need to read the.
Oh, yes.
So conference with real property negotiator, the closed session is authorized by the government code section 54956.8, agency negotiator, Mike Wazanci, city manager, Greg Kapovich, waterfront and economic development director, properties, portions of the Redondo Beach Marina, parking lot, seaside lagoon, and California Surf Club, 239 and 245 North Harbor Drive, Redondo Beach, California 90277, portions of APN number 7503-29-900 and 7503-029-903, negotiating party, Allen Stamford, Beach Life Festival, and under negotiation pricing terms. Thank you.
And who will be there, I guess?
And who will speak to the city manager? Yes, myself, city attorney, Joy Ford, assistant city attorney, Cheryl Park, and waterfront and economic development director, Greg Kapovich.
Okay, we will be back after we come back from closed session to report out.
Thank you. Thank you.
In session.
So moved.
Sir.
Okay, all four?
Aye.
We are adjourned.